You know what, I don't think you're self-conscious.
Uh... Say, uh... My... My... Go back. What a guy. He doesn't push me.
All right. Sorry. We got the last one for us. We don't have a break back.
Yes, yes. Yes, yes. Yes, yes. I'm glad to know. I'm glad to be here.
We got the last one for us. We don't have a break back.
Yes, yes. Yes, yes. Yes, yes. Yes, yes. Yes, yes.
Hey. Yeah, everyone. First, there we go. Yeah, yeah. 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 Okay. Okay. I'll do it.
I have a question. I wanted to say to you all. If you decide this is not... It's 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 not...
Oh, well, actually, I forget.
No.
All right. All right. I don't know. I don't know. The game was... We're going to say that this person... Yeah. Yeah. I'm just believing that most people... And then if they're watching, they'll get... They'll see it. Yeah. 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 Oh, my God. I think I'll let you in. Yes. We have to go to the table for our species of... We're allowed to see here. Wait. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I have sent this report in. If it isn't, then we vote on the first part. If it decides it wasn't... So, we did not listen to it and then sit at... A question. Yeah, look back.
Fifteen minutes.
Yeah. That's about it. He was like...
How's that?
Not the favor. He was coming to me. It's simple, see? Um, we have five. We do have five. Just to find out if you're on the court. I mean, I'm... I'm looking for things. I'm looking for...
I gave him, I gave, uh, I just gave him the... Come on. Right. Right. Lovely way to phrase it. Yeah. 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 Sure. That's the part he takes away. I would go far as to... I gave him, I gave, uh, I just gave him the... Come on. Right. Lovely way to phrase it. Yeah. Yeah. This is a plan. This is like a wagon. So, I'm crazy. Sit down. You don't understand. Right. You're running around. I mean, uh... I know it's a... It's okay. I'm moving out of the over. Yeah. 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 I'll get you to do this, Tom. See? It's not my plan. I'm... 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 I'm waiting. 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 We have to be able to... Anybody else can read this? Thanks. I'm waiting downstairs. I think we're going to... I'm not seeing that. I'm close down here. We're showing the picture of the... We're starting. Yeah. From the meeting to our sunrise, some of the flag. I'd like to leave this flag to fly out. And I have seen that we are... Two of them. And one nation. We have individual liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ali, could you please read in the certification of compliance?
The time, date, location...
Please be quiet in the audience.
The time, date, location of this meeting was published in the address of the press and post. Those were the votes from the county of Lakeview, New York, and then again. The public had already attempted to be in reasonable comment. It may continue to be available to public respect. The meeting, the meeting, the area of the public, they asked.
Okay, thank you. Vote on.
Mr. Freinberger, Mr. Garfield, Mr. Franklin.
Here.
Mr. Stable.
Here.
Mr. Plantbaum, Mr. Hertzel.
Here.
Mr. Leonard, Mr. Isaacson.
Here.
Mr. Gravos, here. Mr. Meyer.
Okay. The confirmation recording says the vote on.
Yes, according to law, thank you.
Okay. Swinging or professional?
If our conference was included before the... The whole thing, not up here. Yes. Right.
Finalization resolution. Just now, just please say we can vote.
Uh, SB twenty-three eighteen, everyone can vote by your own decision.
Thank you. Have a motion.
I'm sorry. Let me clarify that. I will read in full directions. For all of these applications, Mr. Stable, Mr. Hertzel, and Mr. Meyer were not at the meeting. And Mr. Isaacson, he can't vote on this.
We have an uncertainty, Mr. Hertzel. There's only one here. One, two, three. One second. I don't... On number one, I think you just said, Ali, that only one person can vote on it, right?
Uh, number one is... They're Franklin and Mr. Gravos to vote on it.
Okay. Okay. Shall I open it? Second to.
It could have been a full month ago. I mean, what you say, like, how do you get...
Which, which date was that?
All you said.
I wasn't when I came back that day. Okay, I wasn't.
Mr. Stable wasn't.
It was that. Okay, so just Mr. Franklin, um...
Mr. Gravos.
Okay.
They're fine with that decision. It's going to be eighteen.
Okay. You want to move it?
Make the motion.
Move it. Your second. You both in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Rest of the same. Okay, number two, Mr. Jackson.
Um, there's a woman, Mrs. Lee, wants to make a comment. Effectively, what I have in resolution, paragraph nine, is Lee testified that the applicant has to go through her property, which is contaminated or provided for work to get to her property. Uh, the applicant confirmed that the applicant cannot do anything on Ms. Lee's property without a written permission from the DEP. Now, that needs approval. Ms. Lee said that she would like the plan to revise to show the pipe, do not show the pipe over her property. So, uh, Ms. Lee... Stand up. Come to the microphone. Ms. Lee, I asked me to put in the resolution, uh, my office and myself, to say that the, uh, applicant could not go through her property. And I said, I'll make the notation that you don't get permission, um, and the applicant will have to get permission. But, I mean, that's not a board's concern. I, I really now be... I can't put a shed on Mr. Bother's property either. I'm not going to put that in the resolution.
Is, is there a pipe existing there? I mean, I can't vote on it. Is there a pipe existing there right now?
My... There is no pipe. Because she wanted to say that they can't go through her property. And I'm like, that is, of course, they can't go through her property. I'm not going to put that in the resolution.
The only way to go through a property is get an easement.
Right. So, uh, Ms. Lee wants to address the board, and I, I recommend that you hear her testimony regarding her...
Please state your name to the record.
What I really want...
Please state your name to the record.
Oh, Lori Lee.
Okay, you can spell it. You have to spell it.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
I...
Is she a different, uh, format?
No, I think she... It's just regarding the content of the resolution. She can address the board.
Yes. I, I just want it added that they won't make another application to go through my property again. That this will be the end of it. That's what I need.
If they make a new application, they have to have your permission to go through your property. Nobody can make an application, go through your property without your permission.
Then, then I wanted in this, that they, that... This has been going on for three years. It cost me ten thousand dollars. First, we were in Superior Court. Then they made it a different name and went to the DEP. And now they still kept it on their plan, which they took it off. But I need to know that they're not going to try doing this again. I have to be done. It's three years.
I, I think the resolution is adequate. It says that she does want to go through her property. My, my, you know, vice board is that somebody to cross one else's property would order something. As far as whether the applicant can make some future application, anyone can apply, and then we'll be able to work to address them at that time. So, I, I don't think that Ms. Lee is asking for, should be in the resolution or recommendations that the resolution is satisfactory to what it is. I will not identify as a court instruction or if you want, don't want the resolution. I, I...
I just want to say very clearly, the board has no jurisdiction of giving permission to go on somebody else's property.
I, I...
Okay.
I didn't know.
Okay. So, we can't do it... We can't give anybody permission to go on your property.
So then, what do I do? How do I know they're not going to come back and do this again?
Even if somebody comes back, we cannot give anybody permission unless you give written permission.
They could feel that they don't need permission. They could get a lawyer to get a new property.
Mr. Hertzel, I just... I'm asking a question. I don't think it's a question in any form after the board. I think it is a matter of concern.
Okay, thank you.
What?
I, I said, thank you. If anybody goes on your property, you go through authorities. We can't, yeah, we can't give permission then. Okay, thank you.
All right.
The only one who can vote on this one is Mrs. Gravos. Ali?
Um, and also Mr. Franklin.
Okay. So, number two.
I will agree.
Okay. Number two, your second. The second, you both in favor? And the rest, the same. Okay. Number three.
Um, for the remaining resolutions, uh, it's where Isaacson can vote on them and voting for anyone else. So, SB twenty-eighteen A, is it going to change your use? Okay.
Okay, you have a motion?
I'll move.
Move.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number four.
Uh, SB twenty-sixty-two, extend to the second.
Okay. Do we move?
I'll move.
Move.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
SB twenty-three-five, make your decision.
Move. Move. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
SB twenty-two-eighty-six, make your second.
Move. Move the second, all in favor?
Aye.
SB twenty-eighty, uh, then make your second.
Move. Move the second, all in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
SB twenty-two-ninety-seven, make your second.
Move. Move the second, all in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
SB twenty-two-eight-eight, make your second.
Oh, move. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Good job.
Okay. The public here, we're going to change the order of the public hearing today. We're going to start with, uh, number two. We do not have a term yet now for number one.
Uh, number two is also a continuation. Um, it's Mr. Franklin, Isaacson, Mr. Gravos, with all of the tangents. Uh, and Mr. Hertzel, listening to the recording, that only makes four of the... Four, Mr. Stable, we do not have there that we...
Hold on. I wasn't.
Yeah, as long as all you said, so we again will have to go on that application immediately.
What's the second one? I think I hope. It's very... How was, how was number three?
The referee has not discarded yet, so that's right. We can start after.
John, is this a continuation of the... What's your application?
Correct.
Unless you want to do your application again? Ali, how was your thing? One second.
You think they, or that they're going to meeting, and I... Are you having something?
I'm the...
Number two.
We didn't take very far into it. We have a couple of questions. We never... Although, we were...
One, one other question, please.
We opened the...
There's no...
We have a... Mr. Stewart was here, I think.
I watched on him.
You watched on him? Then, it's on.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Isaacson is trying to call the steward, not being late for that meeting, and I'm not sure if he will help me. They were concerned about the fence on the property, the area, and so we're actively... We have people come back and go make...
Yes.
I thought you were...
Yes. Okay, I, I saw him on the phone.
Are we on number two?
Yes.
Yes.
There's a gentleman, sir, that we want to know about, maybe number two?
Yes.
Okay, this is your basic, basic attempt, but this is a big mention. And, uh, if you can cross the damn witnesses, then you have the opportunity to pick your own testimony and the appropriate time.
When they open the phone?
One of the public portion. I'll, I'll alert them.
And, uh, Mr. President, we're recording today and sign a certification to the same as the stable in the case he is. This is the recording. Mr. Franklin, Mr. Gravos, and Mr. Isaacson were all at that previous meeting. So, we can be ready after all.
Do you have a certification from the stable?
Uh, I don't have it. I mean, we, the applicant had finished her testimony, and they were so concerned in the labor about the accuracy of the existing survey, so they were updating that during that fact. So, they're going to vote.
Okay, so what is a continuation, then?
Good viewing, Mr. Chairman, I have a tip of the advocate. Uh, as Ali indicated, there was some discussion at the last hearing regarding the pool, the purpose of the fence. Um, we're not showing how it's achieved, which we planned. Uh, we have updated that plan and provided that to the court. Um, and the guy just had a... He wanted to show the closest one as well, as we can. Here's your...
Go on, bro.
So, but I think that's just not to do with the whole application here.
I'm just going to mark it as a A to hand out that, um, your advocate handed out. It looks like it copies of the permit that previously issued. I don't know what it is.
Yes, there's a question. Question from last time regarding whether, or what in, or the...
And there is...
...in defense, and we provide all that.
There is also an updated survey and updated scene of use plan that's handed out.
Yes, that is correct.
Let the record...
It is not...
Let the record reflect that Mr. Meyer has arrived. However, he was not present at the meeting or previously served as an application, so he'll answer that.
Uh, Mr. Jackson, uh, listening to the tape, you asked a question about the last meeting that the pool is to a different property and it's gave it off, but it's a subdivision. You recall? I wasn't looking for today.
I think that, um, I have a question how to do it because there was some testimony, the pool was on the site plan. It wasn't on the, on the application. I think we updated, I think we clarified my...
I think what the, uh, testimony was last time, if my memory is all right, was there was a, uh, I don't know...
Residential property behind it.
Residential behind it, and that person wanted to keep the pool and miss the pool from residential property. And the pool was going to remain on the subject property. And I don't think that is appropriate. Um, but let's see what the applicant has to say. Because that should be considered effectively a subdivision, because you have improvements to one property that are benefiting a different property.
Unless you leave it open to both properties, then it's not a problem.
Well, that's really an invention. But, but let's see what they say with their application.
Okay.
So, the, uh, uh, cited the board members to allow the candy court to court the Anheuser-Collas Act. The plan was previously submitted, showed the existing house, and this is a change of use site plan. Uh, the ordinance used to allow you change from one kind of use to another, you do that, you don't even come to the board. You go to Ali, you hand it in, and it's done. In, in order to give transparency to the public, they made it that if you're going from a residential use to a non-residential use, you come in and make a change of agent to the board. So, the first plan, they didn't show the pool in the back because we had a survey from last year. And the pool, they got the permit for the pool in April. The pool was put in, uh, and, and they got a permit that was handed out with you for a six-foot-high vinyl fence with six-foot of chain link on top of it that has the, uh, green, uh, dedication constrict.
So, twelve total?
Twelve total.
Because it says, whatever, I was listening to the tape, so it's eighteen total.
It says sixteen.
Or eighteen.
It looks, it looks like sixteen or eighteen, but it's, it's only twelve.
Okay. Only twelve.
Uh, and, and there was a permit for it, the permit to hand it in, there was a permit for the pool. So, this is built as a pool on a residential lot. It's an accessory use. The pool, the private swimming pool is an accessory use. And it's a permitted use, which the permitted use would be schools, uh, houses, the worship for residential. So, we put in as that. We're leaving it as an accessory use to the shul on the same property. Uh, if you look at it, it's when it is used to the shul property, it's also a gate to the rear property, which the property owner owns both lots. So, uh, as Mr. Jackson points out, it's a little unusual, but it's a permitted accessory use. It doesn't violate any laws. It doesn't change the application. It doesn't change the fact that there's a residence here now, a school in the backyard that's going to be used as a shul. And that has been done for schools and, and other shuls that if there's a pool there in state, you don't build a pool in. Uh, and, and shuls and, and schools are similar in, in the fact that people come and pray and study there. And if somebody congregants or somebody wants to swim in the pool, the shul would work out who can swim in that private pool. It's not a pool that's open to the public, no membership for it. It's not changing. It's the same pool as when it was a house. Uh, and now it's a private swimming pool on the lot, same lot, no subdivision, nothing different. Same lot that the house was on, and now the, the house works.
Brian, here, we're going to just confirm that the, the property existing has access to the pool. Other subdivision.
That's right.
Uh, it does have access from...
That's right. The, the plan that was submitted, the survey, really shows...
Well, it won't exist on the shul.
A house, the house goes as a, as a, as a residential structure. And residential structure has access.
And that access is staying.
And access is there. Correct. Uh, everything is staying as it is. Uh, so, uh, it, it doesn't violate any, any rules. We presented this, we presented it, it's informing, no parking needed, we're leaving the driveway there. The relief that was needed was with respect to buffering and is buffering for the existing driveway and buffering for the existing house. Uh, and the applicant, uh, you know, will, will do anything. There was a sick question on his fence, the wall in the property line that, that does buffer it, it's in the deeper of the shul.
What's wrong with taking out the pool?
There, there's no reason to take out the pool. The pool is a permitted accessory use. It's listed in the ordinance for the R-12. Uh, permitted accessory use is a private swimming pool. This is the private swimming pool. No more than it...
It's not on the residential lot, on the shul lot.
It is on the shul lot, and it's an accessory use to the shul.
But you're saying it's not accessory use to the shul.
I'm, I'm saying it is an accessory use to the shul. And the, and the shul, the property owner of the shul, will use that as an accessory use to the shul.
Doesn't that really trust the boundaries of credibility to say that the shul is going to use the swimming pool?
I, I, I don't think it does at all. There's lots of schools that have swimming pools, and, and they use that for their private use for whatever they would want to do. The, uh, the shul, if they wanted to use it, it, in, uh, for, uh, some, uh, activity with the, uh, a, a church that I went to...
That's a holy house of worship.
A, a church that I went to use to baptisms in schools that was at a, a, uh...
Brian, what about the...
Pastor's house.
What about the...
So, yeah.
What about the...
It's an outside mecca. Uh, you know, they're, they're going to use it for whatever the shul uses.
It's a reflection pool.
No, you don't want a mecca. I, I do.
Times, the brother times the hall. So, I...
More familiar with the chapel than the shul. Is it baptism, something?
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, the, right. At the last meeting, we went over the duty we needed. I gave my testimony on, on why I feel, uh, this is appropriate and should be approved. And have it as an essential use, and I... Do what you said.
But let's open up to the public.
We have no, there are no, or any barriers to the rest of the work on the day of use.
No, there are no barriers. The only relief is with respect to buffers, which are associated with the house of worship, that would be associated with the residence. And now those are existing, so...
And I've, I heard on the tape, you said, get rid of the parking, you wouldn't have the buffer issue.
That's correct.
And I prefer to have parking.
Yeah.
And I think we're all, as many parking as possible. Okay. I would open up to the public. Please come forward. You want to...
We're on this case, we think, right? Then, then, do I have to test us?
No.
All right, we have to go to the man. So, uh, you are about to ask questions of the applicant, across the center with this, and you can provide your own testimony.
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
So who do you-
Speak into the mic. Okay.
Sir, my name is Prabhav Pandey, I live at eleven-
Could you spell your last name?
Pandey, P-A-N-D-E-Y.
Okay, thank you. Do you need a record?
And I live at eleven fifty-five Mackenzie Court.
Okay.
This is property across my home.
You have to be affirmed, or sworn.
You swear or affirm, that's what I leave before the court, if it's true, I'll tell you the non-abusive.
Okay, please proceed.
My name is Prabhav Pandey, I live at eleven fifty-five Mackenzie Court, and this property across my home. And this area is residential area, peaceful, quiet area. And if it is converted to synagogue, which becomes a public place, a lot of traffic will be added, and I have seen fruits of that in many different ways, and a lot of noise will be added. So I do not think I will support this thing at all as a public place.
Yes.
So that's my answer.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the public would like to be heard on this application, please come forward. Please come forward. Okay, please state your name for the record.
My name is Ralph Black.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony will be before the court, if it's true, come up here and tell us about it.
Please, what's your address?
Eleven sixty-six Mackenzie Court, approximately around the corner of Mackenzie, and approximately where the shule is going, I'd like to say in full support of it.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the public would like to be heard on this application? I just want to say, uh, Mr. Pony, Pony, Mr. Pandey, Mr. Pandey, uh, synagogue is legal-
I'm just a bystander.
No, I'm just, I'm just answering from before. A synagogue is legal in every zone.
See, that, you're giving the same city.
Yeah, a synagogue is legal in a residential zone.
So what about the traffic, sir?
Okay, we have to make sure there's no traffic, but it's legal.
Last year, sir, when we, there was an accident, they parked right in front of my, uh, after my, uh, mailbox, and, and my, uh, wallet was, could not be picked up. And somebody also tested it, I couldn't figure out who might have been. So it's, uh, even though it may be, uh, legal, as you were saying, the, uh, the case is legal, but it's good to have that, and, 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 and-
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I-
Yes.
Put part of my estimation on, but again, we're, we're back before the board with a fully conforming application. I do think there are people from the, who will be praying, the synagogue here, I think they're here, you know, they should be good neighbors, make sure that they're not blocking any of these driveways, uh, and creating a hazard of, of the streets, blocking the, the mailboxes, uh, and the driveways.
The maximum width of another property is two spots?
Uh, uh-
We think we're going to be getting spots, people don't try there, and they do, but it's a whole set. I think we're better off making people walk, because there aren't spots.
I would say.
Uh, again, the only, uh, question we have is for buffering, uh, so again, granted, we got rid of the spot, the distant parking spot, but, uh, to have one or two of them, I believe, are-
Definitely, definitely need a handicap spot, it's over there.
Okay, these are all for, those who are walking, uh, in the area.
I know, you never know.
So I have just a primary question.
Yes, sure.
Fine, what are the side doors?
Uh, the requirements are there for that existing? The existing are twelve point four feet on each side.
How wide is a driveway?
About nineteen.
So a car could go down that side, you're already parked in the back, there was a pool there?
Uh, well, it would be, obviously, you have to put one lawn on one side and one lawn on the other.
Walking on the side, Eric.
You need a driveway on each side, right? You need to take the site that holds residential and fits into the neighborhood, and maybe you look at a place that would be, uh, attractive.
And you did that, but you didn't need parking for parking?
We already need parking. Parking requirement is zero, would you see it like that?
One second. Time is not like that, Paul, I want the record to show. Okay, thank you. More ask for motion on this application? Move to her. Okay, Mr. Isaacson Woods, do we have a second? Mr. Sable, second, roll for him.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Hurst.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Good luck.
Mr. Myers is here, so we can go back to the first application.
He was his, we have five people?
Yeah. So, Mr. Franklin, we're praying for the first application on the agenda, for which you will continue to make the amount of ten first meetings, we have six. Okay? This is SC twenty-three fourteen, made by David Hertzop, it's a continuation of an earlier effort, of an earlier presentation, that was heard previously on March twenty. I believe, Karen, that we had last off, and Hector's next one, they have a professional one.
Mr. Jackson, could Mr. Franklin speak? He has anything to say about the, he can vote.
Mr. Franklin, you live in the park, okay?
But he can't vote?
Can't vote.
Okay, please, right.
And last, last, we put the vote off, it's no such time as you have an opportunity, it's a kill.
Okay, I just want his participation. With roads and everything, Mr. Franklin is the most knowledgeable.
Participate in here, because we don't know if we're going to finish.
Okay. As you can vote, okay. Uh, one second. Terry, do you have anything to add on this application?
Uh, I'm the chairman, I believe, I really thought, and I would, uh, differently, there would be barriers to the marriage.
Okay.
Look, Mr. Michael York, I'm Jerky Dokes, on behalf of one of the objectors, um, I'll have two witnesses tonight, a planning expert and traffic expert, rather than, before you all have my first expert sworn in, my first applicant. Shh. Before you have him sworn in, uh, I'm gonna, rather than bore you to death with a number of questions he's going to, just simply provide you with his report, if I have followed him, I probably will, like you probably, and of course, the advocate's very primitive approach.
The wife's want to sit inside? Want to sit inside?
Sure.
If they sit there, if you have anything, any objector?
This is where we're at right now, the objector is putting on their case.
The objector has a engineer, a traffic engineer and a planner.
Okay, but, uh, the advocate's case is all finished?
Uh, that's why I asked him to come in.
Yeah, so you just confirm your rights to your, 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 yes.
Do you have any planners, anybody here today?
Yes, I am.
You have to say it.
Yeah.
All right, no.
Okay.
Mr. Penelope.
Mr. Police Ray, right here, do you swear or affirm, that's what I was just saying, before, with just the whole thing, but, okay, please say your name.
Andrew Farmanet, F-P-R, A-N-D-Y.
And you're, uh-
Professional engineer, licensed engineer, also professional traffic operations engineer, PTO, being higher certification.
Could you go through, sir? I, I need to have testified on this board.
I don't believe I can.
Okay, couldn't see, you go through?
Sure, you can give the board your qualifications to testify, and I can tell you as a traffic-
Sure. I'm a graduate of Drexel University with a bachelor's science in civil engineering. Um, I've, I belong to the American Society of Civil Engineers, for which I've been past president of South Jersey branch, end of the New Jersey section, four thousand four hundred years. Um, I'm also, um, involved with Institute of Transportation Engineers, American Society Highway Engineers. Um, I, uh, have-
You've testified on the boards and the three, and the-
For boards, I just remember a county, a three-hole county, I've testified before with other boards throughout the state.
Okay, thank you. It looks up, yes, yes, it's up.
In my review of the applicant, uh, application and applicant's materials, I reviewed the plans, reports, I also reviewed the awards, review letters, um, I've also reviewed some outside documents, which I will, uh, talk about, discuss in my presentation. First, I'd like to start with the roadway network. The applications for nine block subdivision, three point one acre lot, in the single-family residential home, from R-12, that's two hundred feet of frontage along, uh, eastbound West County Line Road, which is a county roadway under county group five twenty-six, under county jurisdiction. Uh, based on information provided in an earlier report, we have some thirteen, uh, traffic camps along West County Line Road, which is a city of Parkside Line. There are approximately ten thousand vehicle traveling that roadway in each direction, the-
Which, what is that?
West County Line Road.
Who made this count?
Uh, this count was, uh, DOT count that is used in the original report, uh, provided, um, by the applicant, uh, that was, uh, in the, that was the Morgan Engineering, uh, and survey report dated November twenty-first, as updated April tenth. Uh, these are counts that are done, they took down road crews on the, uh, roadway, and that collects data, uh, throughout the day for a period of typically seven days a week.
What were, what were the days of the traffic study?
Uh, two thousand thirteen.
Two thousand thirteen.
It was a two thousand thirteen count done, um, by, uh, the DOT, or the DOT, um-
You have a copy of that, people?
Uh, it's within the, uh-
It's in the-
The original report that is provided to you.
And the subject report you can get.
The applicant's original report, it's data that actually, um, the early report, so it's already provided before.
Okay.
So it's a high-volume road, what I'm trying to say, ten thousand trips, and in each direction, twenty thousand per day, that, that's a high-volume road, four lanes, two lanes in each direction, there's no center left turn lane, there are no shoulders on the roadway, so basically, the traffic has to travel in those lanes, using four lanes in each direction. But speed limit is pretty high miles per hour, so it's, uh, a higher, uh, speed road, going through these residential communities with, uh, wideways, that we access the road Cedar Row is residential access roadway, approximately two hundred feet, two hundred feet, uh, west of the west property line. That roadway, uh, is a north-south roadway that terminates at West County Line Road. Spot control, vehicles make right and left turns, enter and exit that roadway. Parkside Drive is, uh, another residential access, that's a cul-de-sac, uh, that means it ends in a cul-de-sac, all is only providing access for the, uh, residential homes that are adjacent to that cul-de-sac. It's located approximately a hundred eighty feet east of the east property line. So with the property being two hundred feet, the property to the east being a hundred eighty, the property to the west being two hundred feet, approximately five hundred eighty feet between the intersection Cedar Row and Parkside, uh, Drive. Ingress and egress movements to and from the proposed cul-de-sac must repeat with traffic on West County Line Road, two lanes in each direction, but there are also driveways and turning movements at the intersection. West County Line Road has no shoulder, uh, on the eastbound side, and this, um, presents, um, a slight issue for vehicles that want to turn right into the site coming from the west, they will slow down and not have shoulder or a turn lane to get into the site. This is not uncommon for other intersections along this roadway. There are intersections in the roadway profile, there's two lanes in each direction, there's no shoulder. What you find here is adding another intersection to this mix of driveways and intersection, but it's multiple movements in such a short distance between two existing intersections. There's no storage lane for the westbound movements, and in other words, if somebody wants to make a left turn into this site, there's some cul-de-sacs being generated, um, or being created by this, uh, application. Vehicles happen to stop in the left lane of the westbound, two lanes in the westbound direction, and again, that's not uncommon for the roadway profile, there's two lanes in each direction and no left turn lane, but again, it's using another location where this has to happen in between two other existing intersections. Topographic features, um, the site plans that subdivision plan that is provided, uh, shows the lot, the lot frontage as to be subdivided, it does not show additional, uh, frontage along, uh, West County Line to the east port to the west, and it doesn't pick up topographic features on adjacent properties, driveways, sidewalks, other features that should be considered, because there are critical decisions made as to what happens in this location, especially since it is in such close proximity of a intersection with an adjacent property and driveway on either side. Additional topographic features, uh, along County Line Road are not shown for the other, the opposite side, on the north side of West County Line Road. Again, there are driveways, there's, um, features that shouldn't be taken into consideration in making a decision for a new intersection at this location. Uh, there's an unsignified pedestrian crosswalk, uh, at the intersection Cedar Row and West County Line Road. It's on the west side of, uh, the intersection, there's signage, this is an existing condition, the concern here is that it's unsignified, and if that crosswalk wants to use a crosswalk, it adds conflicting movements to the roadway. What does that mean to the intersection two hundred feet to east? Vehicles, if somebody walks into a crosswalk, they have to slow down, they have to stop. You have to, in the Jersey law, you have to stop for somebody entering a crosswalk. This takes an additional, um, amount of, uh, driver attention and driver reaction to what's going on. At this location, a vehicle seeing somebody in a crosswalk, traveling at forty-five miles an hour, who have to slow down and stop for a pedestrian before they get into the crosswalk? That slowdown, that's braking distance, that's city distance, is located approximately where this intersection is being proposed. What that means, if there's vehicles stopped at the crosswalk, the next vehicle slows down on its own side, there could be a queue of vehicles that will cause an additional, um, reaction, uh, an additional traffic condition to react to for vehicles heading, uh, in the westbound direction. So we're traveling, uh, west along West County Line Road, these people stop, should they be paying attention, or not be paying attention, um, they would certainly, um, be in conflict with other vehicles that aren't paying attention and would stop for that movement. Long and short, that connection and crosswalk, unsignified connection and crosswalk require driver attention, it takes it away from other things going on on the road, which include drivers coming in and out of this, um, intersection, which is within visible distance of that Other documents, um, that I'd like to discuss that weren't included in the analysis, but were requested, um, by, uh, not by my office, but by, uh, the group that was put together for, uh, our case, was the police report, police crash investigation reports. Uh, in this area, engineers request, three years, the latest three years worth of crash data, so we analyzed what's going on, or what might, um, be an issue, or there's recordable issues out there. So we looked at the crash, we, we requested crash information, and we received dozens and dozens of reports for, between Hope Chapel and Laurelwood, which is a wide range, uh, just approximately two-thirds a mile, four dozens and dozens, less than, just about seventy-five to a hundred reports. We narrowed it down to a quarter mile between, um, between Kent Road and Pine Park, and to the west, and then, uh, Teaberry to the east, which narrows it down to a tighter intersection on either side, uh, of the proposed intersection. Uh, within, and we only received, uh, a year and a half sort of data. Um, that year and a half was the data came, um, from October twenty sixteen to March twenty eighteen. Uh, in that year and a half data, we received, uh, forty-one crash reports. Uh, that, um, to me was a significant number, and I wanted to know why, so I read through all the reports, and I have kind of a summary of what these accidents are, so I can present it to you, but I do have the accident report, here are copies of the accident reports that got from the police.
What's the evidence?
I have a summary that I will provide, a testimony, if this is the same copy, if it copies or something, so it's up to you what you want to do.
Is that something that traffic experts do, they reduce police data and-
We're reading this data all the time.
Is that something that, uh, an ordinary traffic expert would typically do?
No.
Well, you know, I-
I guess we keep accident reports all the time.
Um, this rules of evidence, first of all, don't apply to the plan of order proceeding, um, and even under the rules of evidence, you can get a summary or a synopsis, it's not exactly what it's doing, but I don't have a problem with him just giving an overview of his opinion and his conclusions based on that, and he can give the, uh, actual reports to, uh, his adversary to look at.
Do we have to hear the numbers again, sir?
I don't know what in detail through the numbers, but it's-
What's, what's, what's your point? Why do you want to show us the word?
Here's the point, uh, at Kent Road and Pine Park, there were twenty-three crashes, twenty-three total crashes within that year and a half. At, um, Cedar Row, there were four crashes, at Parkside Drive, there were five crashes, at Teaberry Court, there were nine crashes. Here's the breakdown of what I found while I looked through. Of the forty-one crashes, six involved buses, school buses. Uh, a total of sixteen people were injured by the forty-one crashes, indicating a significant impact to life and property. Nine of the crashes occurred within two hundred feet of the proposed cul-de-sac. Most of the accidents involve movements at intersections, including turns, sideways, and rearing crashes. And this is really just a summary of what I found in the reports, and they can be provided. Uh, each intersection had crash history, now this is notable, that each intersection has the crash history. Typically, unsignified intersections, uh, signified intersections typically do have crash history, because they're higher volume, vehicles required to stop, some choose not to stop anywhere, some choose, rearing accidents happen in signified intersections. That, from a traffic and engineering standpoint, is very typical. Unsignified intersections, you would typically expect to find every intersection have that history, but in this case, within a year and a half, uh, I, I summarized it, there were crashes at each of those intersections.
Just one second. Mr. Jackson, I have a question for you. If they were to be asked of any variances, I know they were asked of eight houses, and I think seven would do without any variances, can we take this into consideration, that there's traffic in the area?
The, um-
If it's totally conforming application?
That, that's something that makes a little bit of analysis, a byright application is a byright application, that's not what this is, however. Even with a byright application, you can use the data and the information to see that if they require side triangles, uh, with the road, wherever the road comes out onto the highway, et cetera, I don't know if any of that's really germane here, but kind of what they can do, so there are, there is things, there are things that you can do with this data, but it makes a point.
Isn't that the county's jurisdiction? On tri- uh, side triangles? To County Road?
To a point, well, you're, you're traffic, you're engineer, you're a planner, that's what I refer to him. Uh, the, uh, also, the, I think you have a byright application, if the zoning was- Also, I think you have a byright application, the zoning work is a very technical account of traffic conditions or conditions on the area. So I think it's relevant when he wants to go over the count on the number of units. And if I have to, I'll use the geometry of the term. I think if they're both satisfied, we should ask the layout.
Yeah, we're satisfied with the layout from purposes of approval. This is County Road, the ultimate design of the access to and from County, County Road is going to be subject to the OSHA County Board and the OSHA County Engineering Board.
They supersede us.
This may be great information, it's something practically that should be shared with the county if this project was approved.
And I agree with what the professional is saying. Traffic engineers typically, when I, what I started out with crash reports is corrective. There are measures that have to be taken to correct when we see a problem, and traffic engineers have a toolbox and there are things that can be done.
But as what our professional is saying, that belongs to the county, we can't correct it. Anything, any design on the road, it belongs to the county. Am I correct?
May I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
I'm going to read the conclusion statement from the applicant professional team. It is concluded, based on the analysis sent forth in this report, that planning to construct a residential subdivision can be improved and operate compatibly with future traffic conditions in the area. The access system that has been proposed will effectively and safely distribute site-generated traffic flow to and from County Road. The sunny location will operate within acceptable traffic engineering practice. Do you agree or disagree with that conclusion, if so?
Within parameters of the data that was analyzed and put out before, traffic volumes, turning movements were analyzed for delay. I don't disagree with the conclusions that the delay involves so many turning movements and that delay will be leveled surface, I believe leveled surface to the C. That I'm not arguing with. My concern here is that this accident analysis was another form of analysis that wasn't necessarily looked at. The data wasn't collected, wasn't analyzed. The data for the traffic volume, I have no argument. The first traffic report that was provided relied solely on outside data and reanalysis of that data. Second report actually collected traffic volume data and analyzed that data, and that was good analysis, and I'm not going to argue that. What I'm saying is, there's another level of analysis that could and should be done as part of your decision making, because I sat through the hearings before in Redfield Transports, meeting this, you've had concerns about certain movements with driveway. And my analysis here is saying that your concerns are verified by this stack of your data.
I think at the last meeting, we did say, we mentioned two more questions.
You're familiar with the current studies, am I correct?
I am.
Based upon your analysis and what you know and the talent of the board, what would you do differently with this design?
If we go through my testimony, and again, I reviewed the board, so I understand what you're looking for, I understand what you need to make a decision, that's why I'm trying to get you to that point where you have the information to make your decision. That's what I have in my presentation there tonight.
Mr. Chairman, in the essence of time, I think everybody here is similarly with the traffic on westbound and right road. And I believe we considered this application, oh, we have a write-in, write-out basis to make electricity for this development. I don't think anybody here was interested in seeing that. So I don't know if that alleviates most of your concern with traffic having only a write-in, write-out.
And subject to the county?
Subject to the county, obviously, but that would be the application that the board would put forward.
See, that's important, why? The board can make writing engagement, write-out, but ultimately, it's a decision.
That would definitely be a recommendation to the county. I believe we stayed.
The county may look at this application and approve and say, more fine with right turn and right turn out, or they may say, you know what, based upon this information and based upon similar information that you profiled, maybe they extend a settlement, maybe they do something, which might, they have an understanding and authority with regard to westbound line road, that, oh, caution doesn't happen, and that's a problem.
We don't take it lightly, and that's why we said write-in, write-out.
I truly understand that, because I heard your question and your connotation, and you've mentioned before the write-in, write-out, and I don't, you haven't come to your condition yet, so I don't know that that's written, but I have heard the discussion about it, so I understand where your concerns are.
Just one question.
Yeah.
What other changes besides right turn and left turn would be written? What other changes besides right turn and left turn out would be written?
Site distance. Let me get to the site distance part of it then. Okay, access. The access, and we discussed the access, the configuration of the access. Westbound line road is under county jurisdiction, they are required to be approved, we all understand that. The offset distance, centerline to centerline is not shown between Cedar Row and the proposed cul-de-sac driveway. That's to be shown on the plan. Plan, it's fully planned at the property lines. I would suggest that because it is in such close proximity to the intersection, that centerline to centerline distance be provided for both Cedar Row and Parkside Ave. Traffic engineering design standards, and here's my answer to one of your questions, traffic engineering design standards by state and by county, if the county takes into account state's requirements. The state requires a minimum of 12 foot between the driveway and property line, called SBS. In this case, the driveway, the cul-de-sac intersection is literally right on the property and its radius touches the driveway adjacent. There is no separation on the adjacent driveway. The adjacent driveway is non-conforming, it exists without that 12-foot separation. So without 12-foot separation from this cul-de-sac road and the driveway not having a separation, the total distance between driveway should be 24 foot by engineering standards. There's no separation. The ready eye, the driveway and the cul-de-sac basically touch where that property, if conflicting movements with inbound movements and outbound movement from the driveway and they cross over this intersection. The concern is the driveway can be pushed all the way to the west and now adjacent to the property line, it's been discussed before, the fence is there, the link, the sidewalk between the alleyways, very, very close, and that is concern, the movements in and out of the driveway, even right turn movements into this area, which was a point that you were leading before.
Mr. Bro, what do you think about that?
I'm reserving my questions for the applicant professionals.
Let me move on to site distance. The roadway, 45 miles an hour, design intersection, design site distance for 45 mile an hour plus 5 mile an hour savings, 588 feet. This is the site distance. Not without a site triangle, we acquired a site triangle, it was clear of any trees and fences. Site line is the distance needed for somebody to make a movement from stop, at stop sign on a side street to get into traffic. In this case, because there's four lanes, two lanes in each direction, there's an additional distance that has to be provided to be able to cross if you make a left turn out of the site. But even for right cars, the concern in this particular case is that there's a fence and a driveway, driveway which may have a car parked in the driveway, another car pulling out, that vehicle is ironed in 30 inches, it could block the view of somebody at this location. The site triangle, that's an area that has to remain clear on this particular block, same with the parking area. But if you change proof of site distance purposes, now say the site distance, not only for a left turn, but for a right turn, somebody making a right turn out of the driveway has to look to their left so that they can get east in traffic.
It's by definition, the site triangle allows for the site distance, Terry, isn't that?
Yes, that's right. There are different methods of calculating site distance.
What do we have in this site triangle?
Site triangle, site triangle for purposes of the township is probably developed on township property. What they're going to have to show from County Road on the roadway is that there is actually a sudden distance to a new intersection.
What number, is that the same vibe that you have?
No, it depends upon what standard the county is going to be applying to the county.
So it'll have to conform to the county's site triangle, would that?
Absolutely, we have to conform to the county's site distance guidelines. Again, I get more information that you can make any recommendations or understand where the county will be on their decisions. So these are traffic engineering standards that I'm giving you, and you can take them and make your decision. I, you know, I'm only collecting information.
And again, even if we make a decision, it doesn't mean that it's approved, because it has to?
Correct, it still has to go to the county and they have to approve. Let me move on to circulation. Number of driveways shown on site, each house has two driveways, except for the one nearest westbound line road. Each of those driveways is 20.
Driveways per house?
As shown on the plan. Each are 36 and a half foot long and 20 foot wide.
Second and third one?
No, all.
So for each property, you have two driveways, which provide a press curb over 20 foot each. That's 40 foot of depressed curb over the frontage of each of those properties. In effect, you don't have an edge or a guiding line if each property is now depressed curb. You have very little curb provided, because there's so many down to that, what does this mean? This means that there's a lot of movements that can be made from the road anywhere along that side. There's driveways of 36 feet long that allows for stacking of two vehicles. What is height for stacking of an 18-foot vehicle? Potentially, that stacking would back out on the sidewalk. 20 foot width for each driveway means that cars are parked side by side, requiring the ordinances for five parking spaces. Two driveways, 20 foot wide and 36 foot long, each could.
It's actually four.
Four of the driveways. Four of the ten acres. Driveways could fit those vehicles, but if they're stacked head to head, side to side, what that would do is lock in a lot of vehicles, make a lot more movement stacking out and turn into the way that's safe. The area close to the house requires a driver to be out on the road, and then a whole pool of movements from the house on the driveway into that cul-de-sac. This is something that.
Terry, is 40 feet a direct weight, is that a sound waiver?
That's how standard for the parking space behind the bike. So what we commonly see, constantly parking for this fancy development, we commonly have two cars stacked back and back at 80 feet, that's very, your width minimum per stall is not service. That's why you see what you see.
He's concerned with the lower curb, is that, is that conform, or I mean?
It's typical with Lakewood.
There's nothing, there's nothing in order that says that stuff.
Nothing.
Terry, you could fit four cars on each driveway.
I don't, I can't see the width as in, on the 36-foot standard.
Which 20 foot wide, 20 feet by 36.
Most of the dwellings have two driveways curbs indicating, but.
I see that, and they're, it's 20 by 36.
This is common with Lakewood development for this type of unit. It's based on the county standard, which indicates a bit of how you need it installed.
I would like to see four cars off the road, many on the driveway.
And that's why we're using a minimum of four parking spaces.
This one has eight, no?
This one, I don't, I can't see the dimension of the width on drawing. It certainly needs the length required, it's for two, for two sets of spaces.
On the second one, on the second one, Terry.
20 by each side.
It really wouldn't make the length required, it's 36 foot.
It's 36 by 20.
You got 218, you're gonna put the front bumper right on the house, and the rear bumper, you're gonna be out on the sidewalk.
But that's, that is what is allowing you.
But I'm saying, it doesn't work. Let me get out, because it should be at least 40 foot.
Can you comment on the parking?
One other time, one other time, please.
The comment is very easy. These are conceptual layouts to show we can fit a lot of parking. That's showing that you can fit like eight parking spaces there if you want. This is a very exclusive neighborhood. These are going to be custom homes. We're not asking for approval of those driveways or those houses, we're asking for a subdivision approval. People are going to come in with that there's a green house that they're going to build, and they're going to be able to put enough parking. So that plan shows that we have plenty of room for parking. We're not asking you to approve.
And you're not exceeding anything more than what?
We're not exceeding anything, it shows nine by, or 18 by 36, you can fit four spaces. It's showing we could fit eight spaces on each lot if we wanted to. And the purpose was just to show that even if we exceed 10 bedrooms, like Lakewood sometimes does, there's plenty of room for parking. But that's not what's going to be built, because that would be ugly, and this is not going to be an ugly development if it weren't approved. It's going to be very nice.
It's not a site project. One other time.
Mr. Climber is correct, but on an application like this, if there are traffic and safety concerns, or if it's in both conditions, that's the location radius of the driveway. I mean, we're talking about safety, so if you connect with the subdivision, restricted the driveway to be in a certain location on the cul-de-sac road.
And the applicant would, would certainly be happy to accept any reasonable restrictions on the driveway locations that the board feels are appropriate.
I think Mr. Climber touched upon more of the score, or if we're not following. I like the comments on the record, my next question is probably on the applicant. What do you agree with and what can you need with this?
Anything else?
We had a, one question at the last hearing regarding, I believe it was Derek's floor that we had heard at the last, about the county being on May 3rd, which was a holiday. He looked into it and received confirmation from, from the Lakewood Student Transportation Authority, LTSA, and they confirmed that schools were on holiday schedule, changed dismissal times. Buses did not run on their regular schedules on that day. My concern there is that the traffic volume to be done, that to be done with the count, but certainly, if there was a holiday, that would not necessarily be a day that would be a good day to consider for traffic analysis.
Just to speak to that holiday, it's not a hard holiday in the Jewish calendar split. And the only difference of that holiday is that the buses just left earlier. They would have left sometime during the day, they just left earlier in the day, so they would have, instead of leaving at four in the afternoon during the peak hour, they left a little bit earlier, so.
Good to know what time the report is made.
Yeah, it had, it had the time in the report, it had all the peak times. It was there during the peak time, so it actually, that would have been a little bit greater.
And I don't disagree, I think a little bit more information, whether the account or more information as to what the pigs would have been by the offset due to the early dismissals, that could be a concern, because if buses are dismissed early, then they're not stopping on the road and they're not interfering. The impact of those buses, the busy periods, could be a factor that you should take into consideration. Let me just go to my conclusion, I gave you a lot of information here, but in my opinion, that there are multiple conflicting movements on the roadway. I've mentioned the accidents, I've mentioned the two intersections in the viaduct, turning movements with driveway both sides of the road, there's adjacent properties, all these movements, we use the same roadway. The new intersection that's being created is very close to the existing intersection. Typical intersections along that roadway are 300 feet plus, in this case, it's less than 300 feet. Again, county jurisdiction, they're going to review it, but you should be aware of these conditions, that there's multiple access, that each intersection. But you should be aware of these conditions, that there's multiple access at each intersection, introducing another intersection. Where there's an existing driveway, yes, it's a single family home with ten trips per day, two trips in the peak hour. That's now being increased to sixteen trips in the peak hour, trying to use the same roadway. And also a hundred and sixty trips daily. I think in what we use, it was mentioned that it was eighty trips daily. But based on the size of the homes and based on the factor that was used in the traffic report, the double the numbers based on the margin of home. I believe that the number should be increased from eighty to a hundred and sixty daily trips. I'm not saying that's insignificant. The significant point would be they surpassed two hundred and fifty trips. That's where it would violate the RSIS requirements for cul-de-sac. At this point, a hundred and sixty trips do not violate that, but it does get a little closer to that point. And maybe it should be monitored, you can put a condition in the report to check that those numbers are true based on recounts or counts later after the development.
Thank you.
There are no further questions. We're waiting for the sound.
Any other questions?
Okay.
May I ask?
Yeah, sure.
If you're ready, wait till after my plan goes through.
Sure.
If there's no way I'll bring it back again. Do you say your name and your profession?
My name is Thomas Sangar.
Spelled like last name?
Licensed planner in the state of New Jersey.
Who spelled your last name?
S C A N G A R E L L O.
Have you testified before this board before?
I've testified before this board many years ago, but recently before the zoning board in this, in this county. I don't recall that I've met any planning board members.
Please raise your hand. You swear affirm testimony before this board with the whole of the nation.
Yes, I do.
You sat outside Mr. Hurley or what?
Yeah, who wants to do the zoning board? I said, you said you testified to the zoning board.
Yes, I testified before the zoning board. I testified before many municipalities and also represent many municipalities.
Please proceed.
So, Thomas Sangar, would you give his opinion as to the application?
That's a loaded question. In order to prepare for this testimony, I also visited the site, also visited many other sites in the township of Lakewood. And of course, prepared this testimony because it's definitely my job to help you consider the parameters as they relate to your planning goals. And historically, Lakewood has encouraged growth, more people, more kids, more housing, more traffic, more schools. Newspaper articles are full of that. So what you did several years ago is you developed a master plan. And that master plan was based upon something called smart growth. Which is a term that was also used by the applicant. And I think you did that, best I can determine, as a strategy to balance out the growth with planning. So I would like to discuss smart growth for a minute because it was used by the applicant. It's through after a master plan and it affects this development. And the way it affects this development is twofold. One, we have a development application that has a specific design to it. And two, we have a development application that is requesting both variances with respect to frontage. And doing so, it gives, opens the door for us to discuss the reasons why those variances, that variance should be banned. These are all things that the applicant has already talked about, so it's in our purview to discuss them as well. So let's discuss what smart growth is. And smart growth was established during the turn of the century by Benjamin Underwood. And he was, he was someone that I knew very well and he was someone that I learned from. And when he developed the smart growth program for a major city in the state of Florida, I was asked to implement that smart growth program. And currently am still doing that and have been very successful doing it. So it was not a, smart growth is something I'm not familiar with. It's something that I've been called an expert on, although I've been called an expert on many things, but I really think I'm only an expert on cooking. I'm not a delivery expert on some other thing. At any rate. It was a joke. I'm also shattered. At any rate, let's talk about what smart growth strategy combines. And this comes strictly from your master plan that you adopted. And it says that, "Smart growth creates a balance of compatible arrangement of residential, business, and industrial land uses to minimize land use conflicts." Big word there, minimize land use conflicts. Preserve and protect existing viable residential neighborhoods and encourage upgrading of residential neighborhoods as appropriate. Discourage deviations from established land use patterns that would permit incompatible and or conflicting land uses being developed adjacent to one another. Preserve open space. These are goals that you have set out in your adopted master plan as strategies. It also talks about discouraging the construction of new residential development, fronting state, county, and major local roadways, allowing access to be provided to interior residential development and most major roadways. And it asks you to strictly enforce both indoor and yard zoning standards and unify development code, which you also asked to be adopted by the governing body, to prevent overbuilding of individual sites. If you go to another set of strategies, it steals the housing. It calls for requiring all new residential developments to meet monitored design standards. To encourage clustering and appropriate zone locations at reasonable densities. To protect residential areas from the intrusion of conflicting land uses. Now, we all represent one of the neighbors adjacent to this property. And there are several other objectives. So when we look at a sentence that says, "You have a goal to protect residential areas from the intrusion of conflicting land uses," we wonder whether or not the smart growth strategy, the smart growth goals and objectives are being followed. And whether or not you're encouraging compact cluster community design, which is another type of strategy. As far as circulation, we talked about that. It's classified future residential roadways to exceed the residential site standards. Now, smart growth is not a new, a new phenomenon. It's something that, as I told you, was developed around the turn of the century and something you picked up on from the planner that developed your master plan. But it's somewhat incumbent upon you to consider that when you consider the design of this subdivision. Smart growth was used to, 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 was taken out of context by the applicant, in my opinion. Because what the applicant said is, "This, this, this, this lot is screening for development." And I'm not sure what screening for development means. Screening for development is, "Let's pack it in, let's develop it as much as we can." It doesn't mean, "Let's follow the goals and objectives that were set out by you in your master plan." It doesn't follow the goals and objectives that you planned for. Smart growth is a concentration of your assets, making communities more livable, more walkable, that you already have. And what it does is, I'm gonna read this right out of a strategy for smart growth that they handled. It creates neighborhood livability, better access, less traffic, thriving suburbs, and keeping open space open. So when you look at smart growth as a planning tool that you have advocated and you want to support, we find, or we act, my client is a planner. Forty-five years as a planner. I'm not an engineer, I'm a planner. Also do landscape design work and I really am good at what I do. But when I look at it and I look at the standards by which you have used, I know that there's a better way to design this subdivision in accordance with smart growth planning and in accordance with not having the impact that it has on the neighbors than what you have before you. So as minor as it may seem, the design has a substantial negative impact in surrounding neighborhood and therefore not satisfy, not advance. Don't forget, the land use law says advance, not just satisfy, but advance the purposes of zoning under the master plan. Now, many years ago, I was the creator of the certification process that was you all have to go through in order to become planning board members and zoning board members. I created this, helped to create the curriculum, created the exam, I taught the course, I still teach the course. I'm a member of the executive board in Jersey, planning official. I'm an adjunct at Rutgers University and at Golden County College. I have taught probably five hundred planning board zoning board members on zoning and planning in the state of New Jersey. I've represented, I've been to over seven thousand like meetings like this and I am so glad that you gave this spot because that's what we should do. And I can tell you that when we look at the purposes of zoning, we have to ask ourselves, does the variances that are being asked for here, and it's just one, I know it's just one, but it's one that has a negative impact on the entire development. So let's ask ourselves, does it guide appropriate uses of lands for health, safety, and welfare? Does it guide the appropriate use of land for my client or his neighbors? Because his neighbors are gonna be looking at the street when we're looking at cars. Does it provide adequate light air and open space? I gotta tell you, that particular piece of property has some of the most magnificent trees on it and in place in his town except for maybe the cemetery banister. The trees are just magnificent. And to cut every single one of those trees down is just an absolute crime. When it can be done differently, and I've drawn many different designs on that particular piece of property. I didn't create lots. I got five, I got six, I got seven. That probably would be more valuable than the lots that were being created by the applicant. But it doesn't make sense to go in there and destroy everything that's there and not create light air and open space because it doesn't advance that purpose of zoning. Does it promote population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of the existing residents? No. You've got a roomful of people sitting over on the, over on the bright side over there that's gonna tell you that they're affected by it. They're affected in a negative way by it. Does it provide sufficient open space? No. It's a complete, it's a complete use of every square inch of land on that, on that piece of property. And does it promote a desirable living environment? Well, we don't know that. And I can tell you why we don't know that. But first, let's concentrate on the benefits of the existing neighborhood. Let's not concentrate on the benefits to the existing camp. What we need to concentrate on, what the land use law tells us to concentrate on. What are the benefits to the existing neighborhood? Not to you all in the whole camp, not to bring any more housing, bring any more people, to the neighborhood. The act is very clear because it says that the benefits have to substantially outweigh any of the detriments. Big word there. Second time I use that word, substantially. Big, big word. Ask yourself, do the benefits of us giving these variances, which allows these lots, does this substantially outweigh the detriments? Do we know what the houses will look like? That's a big, big issue. The applicant has come before you. And every hearing that I've been to, and again tonight, and saying we're only asking for the subdivision, I have, in forty-five years of planning, I have never, ever, ever heard that. Because we don't know what's gonna happen there. There's no mechanism for site plan approval for those lots. Those individual lots are gonna come before you with an application that he reviews and says to you, "This is what's gonna happen." If you look at other subdivisions like that in this municipality, you find driveways. Those driveways are occupied by basketball hoops. Those driveways are occupied by, as playgrounds for kids. Where are the cars going to go? Cars are gonna go on the street. Cars are gonna park perfectly against the cul-de-sac. I can take you to at least five subdivisions just like that and show you that's what's gonna happen. Because we don't know what those houses are gonna look like. We don't know that they're gonna be very expensive, old tree houses. We haven't seen any. We don't know what they're gonna look like. They could be appealing to blind parties, but to someone else, they're not appealing. So we don't have, we don't, we don't have that benefit. There's no, we know, we know nothing to validate them nor to warrant zoning leave based upon the law that you're being asked to uphold and support. We do know that the current design will have a detrimental effect to the quality of life of existing neighbors. Views will absolutely be, the views that they now have will absolutely be destroyed. And there's no way, there's absolutely no way that you can buffer that unless you build a wall. If you build a concrete wall, you'll buffer it. If you're hiding a car, it's not gonna be easy to do that. And then those people, some of them who have swimming pools, will be looking at a concrete wall. They won't be looking at what they're looking at now. And the fun thing about it is, if it's not, if it, the quality of life of those neighbors, you know it's gonna be affected. But yeah, they could put the street on the other side. But wait a minute. I think the developer lives on the other side. So you have the power to zone. You have the power to plan. And in doing so, you have the power to determine whether or not there is a benefit to the, to the neighborhood with respect to those variances and whether or not that design satisfies the principles that are established in your master plan and the principles of the land use law. Finally, finally. There are several cases that you need to consider here in Michael and Tuck and Michael can support them as well. There's the Breston versus Gas case, which talks about, which talks about the granting of, of these, of C2 variances, provided there's a desirable visual environment. There's a Kaufman and Warren case, which says that no C2 variance should be granted when really the purposes of the owner will be advanced. Purpose is the owner. Approval must benefit the existing neighborhood and the community. There are many cases where to provide positive criteria where it doesn't, there's no basis for inutility. This lot can be used for lots of things. It can be used for magnificent houses. It can be used for restoring the existing house. It could, you could build four or five houses on that lot and make even more money than you can when you build eight houses. In the Poland versus South Plainfield case, it says that, once all variances are granted, there has to be a benefit to the surrounding neighborhood. There are unreported pieces where Judge Brackman ruled that, concluded that the advancement of the purposes of zoning must be a benefit to the existing neighboring properties.
Can you think of any reason why the board would grant variance other than for the benefit of the county? Can you think of any reason why the board would grant variants other than for the benefit of the?
No.
Thank you, Alan. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you. You have any witnesses, Mr. York?
No, do you have any questions?
Okay, yeah, okay. You? Okay, let Mr. Wise. You have questions, no?
Are you aware of other permitted uses?
Could you speak into the mic, we should have a record.
Are, sorry, are you aware of other permitted uses in this zone, in this piece of property? My mind is very sorry, permitted uses, you have all that information. So are you aware that a school would be a permitted use on this property?
I'm aware that schools are permitted use on this property.
Very well. Are you aware that a synagogue or a type of house of worship would be permitted use on this property?
Yes, a synagogue, a synagogue and a little bit of a church.
Are you aware that the zone would permit a campus type of development on this piece of property?
Yes, we would.
Okay, so with, with those awarenesses, I want to just take a step back to the application we have here. You talked a lot about the variance that the applicant has been talking about. You would agree that the variance is four feet of variance, is that correct?
Correct.
This is about four feet?
No.
That's four feet. This application is about a poor design and variances. That's your personal opinion?
No, that's my personal opinion as an expert. And my personal opinion has to relate to the master plan that was adopted by this board.
Well, can you ask a question about that master plan? We'll get right into that. Isn't it true, if not understanding your comments about the master plan, the residential uses are permitted use in this subdivision of property?
Of course.
Then why are we talking about the master plan as you seem to suggest that it's not a permitted use?
I didn't suggest it was not a permitted use, what I suggested is that the design, this subdivision, the design should really benefit the applicant by squeezing every bit of lots into that which contradicts, which contradicts the smart growth planning that this board has adopted. The design is one of the worst I have ever seen in forty-five years on real life. I think I'm asleep.
Mr. Wise, do you have any experts?
I know it's, I know they have the, the objector wants to talk, I'm sure, Alan has, I'm not sure if Alan.
You have, objector's open, open for the public. Yeah, sure. Mr. Jackson, the objector wants to talk, he's represented by, by, he gets to speak or just by public portion?
If you call him as a witness.
Whatever you prefer, I mean.
I'm allowed to, I'm allowed to.
It makes no difference to me one way or the other.
Yeah, the thing that I, I would rather have something represented by council. It's testimony questioned by the board because you don't want to have twice the app form getting information. People get off and say reasons, you know what I mean? Just try to keep it focused and non-negotiable.
Take that, go ahead. It's quick, it's.
What papers? Sir, hang on one second.
Mr. White.
Okay, one second please, hold on.
The video is not working.
No, the audio recording was on when the testimony started and now it's not. So I just started it, but.
One second.
I mean, the video is still about.
We're not starting, I'll look it up.
No, the video is still going, it should be fine, but the audio.
We can hear his testimony then.
The audio is not working.
I'll call the meeting back to order. Please be seated and quiet. We'll see you in a second. Uh, Mr. York? Is Mr. York here?
I think he said that permission first.
He went to pray.
You ready?
Yeah. Wait a second. Do you go through your case, your witnesses that we have, and make this seven lots conforming, is that a?
No. What do you mean change the entire application?
Technically, if you've got, if it's told at the formal application, it's stand, you can deny it.
There's opposition, obviously, you have, by right application of seven. I don't know, I didn't call the board, but I wonder.
I have authority to talk.
Now, if you make this seven lots, Mr. York's pointing out, there might be different geometries for the play out of seven.
One second, yeah, Mr. Wise, just for the reference, Mr. Wise.
Yeah, well, I have authority from Mr. Hertz, I'm sitting here in the audience and after discussing this with him and after listening to the excellent testimony of the objector's planner, who said that seven lots would be a beautiful subdivision application, I didn't say that. We would like to amend.
He said you made a design that seven fits.
So, so it's not to make this the worst subdivision in forty-five years in the state of New Jersey, we would like to amend our application.
It's still the worst application in forty-five years.
But, but I had authority from Mr. Hertz's side to amend this application to seven conforming lots in this residential zone. What we'd like to do is to come back one more time with the revised plan to show you the seven lots, which would be an ass rate out of the nation.
The room decides to not be filled, this is the board. But, Mr. Hertz, well, I think if they want to amend their application, come back and write in the testimony and show the seven lots subdivision conforming.
You will need to have other board members who are not here supporting, otherwise five who are actually with the actual name will be the only five.
Okay, then my, my only question now, the, the U or Mr. Jackson, is they're submitting new plans, which is totally conforming, so it's technically a new application.
Well, if there are many kinds where applications can be amended. If you want to give them that attitude so as not to go through the whole thing sort of to, and I think that's in your discretion as the chair. If you think they should make a whole application and you wrote this one up or down, then it's for office sessions.
What do you?
You know, the seven lots.
Confederation, it'd be totally different.
Sorry, what I anticipate is going to happen is that the geometry is going to change so that those four-foot varies right or are going to go away. So this is really, in, in my mind, you know, the day that they, what, I shared the loss of all this, I guess that day. But you should just swish this out a little bit and you're going to have bigger frontage on the lots that we send, it'll be on the same kind of job.
Do you want to re-notice when you're ready for it?
No, I want, I just want, I want to carry it.
No, I have a problem.
I tell you why I want to carry it, because we started this in March and I.
Where are you going to add any problems, Karen?
Okay, okay, okay. When did, when could you have? When could you have new plans submitted?
So, here's, here's how, here's how I, I would like to give the courtesy of your professional time to review the plan that you submit. So what I, what I say is that I need you to give us sufficient time to pick the plan and to give, to give your professionals the adequate time to review the plan.
Alan, when is the next meeting and when's the?
Second meeting in October, we're going.
I know, but you need time, you need time to review, to renew your plans.
It's not going to take that long.
When can you have your plans ready?
Two, two weeks.
Two weeks, so when?
And we need time for Terry to review that before you're ready.
Second meeting in October.
Second meeting in October.
October ninth and twenty-third.
It is recording now, I believe.
I know.
Alan, the twenty-third. Twenty-third.
I think just a regional market.
Yeah.
If you're going to go back to the drawing board, if you're going to come back with seven lots subdivision, which means the zone you're talking, you're still going to be to justify the lack of sidewalk and the one side of the road unless you're going to provide that. Okay, so you are going to.
That's going to show up, I'll get it right now.
All right, so you're anticipating submitting a completely conforming subdivision.
And Brian, if you can include everything that was, all the issues that were raised, right in, right out, all that included in the. Subject to the count.
Stay right in.
Subject to the count, subject to the count.
Go back for thirteen.
That's the second, just get them the second.
Thirteen is, any cause of question? It's thirteen and twenty-seven.
This is totally something, I, I, November thirteenth, I had taken this spring on broadway. I had taken this spring on broadway prior to the, but I sold, but I sold that in the go-to so I didn't get here, I really don't.
Gotta take us along. Gotta take us along.
Yeah, no.
Our October and November meetings are going to be very heavy. We have, we want to say for our application, we'd like to know if you have that with the hearing. We've got mine, I don't know if you have a bill of time to review to go to the death of hearing. So, the agenda is going to be bold regardless of the application, but I'm like a lot of times.
What's the session, what's the session, do you want to start?
Twenty-seventh, twenty-seven, I think she said. Alan, you're correct.
Since the thirteen, twenty-seven.
November twenty-seven? One second, I have time, Terry, yeah.
The applicant, I believe, we're asking for an occasion on November twenty-seventh, is that correct? Yeah, because I want, I want to be able to, to formulate a plan, feel a bit of the expert, to have sufficient time, your professionals to be prepared, we're talking to, all types of people.
Mr. York, is that good for you?
That's fine.
Well, how much did you get this based in terms of last time? How much did you get this based in terms of last time?
Uh, I think I got one.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Jackson, if it's November twenty-seventh, are we doing a new application or a digression?
In your discretion, if you want to accept an amendment application, we've heard, you know, months of testimony.
It's three months from now.
I, I, I don't have any trouble, a lot of towns, the dirt suffer more than that.
And they have to waive the time limits?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I waive any steps for a time limit.
They're not waived.
And to take it to the last time over here was at the beginning of the summer, thirty, or why would you get hurt? So it's about you.
So, Mr. York is okay?
Twenty-seven is fine.
Okay. I think everybody needs to know. Do we have a motion to continue some of these? Hold that second. And all in favor?
I'm sorry, the application we could work, I have that's two hundred and three fourteen, asking you to submit the application.
No, no.
You erase it, it's not today, it's your right.
So is there any, a lot of people came out tonight, sorry, they wanted to. What the board's doing, based on the opposition, they're, they're going to amend their plan to show what they say will be a warming application. That will be on file ten days before the meeting at least. Everyone will have a chance to look at it, scrutinize it, you can ask questions about it, but that's what it looks like the board is poised to do. So, does anyone have any special issues there?
He said?
Yeah. Uh, what's your name?
My name is Edward Einhorn.
Mr. Einhorn, uh, yes, with your permission, Mr. Jackson, sitting here, I think in here.
My name is Edwin Einhorn, I live at fourteen forty-one Cedar Row. This is the fourth time, I believe, I'm here on this.
Mr. Einhorn, one of the things that this is, is a process. And in some ways, what's happened is a success story. You had an applicant who had a non-conforming application, the face of opposition challenged you, they're now making it conform. So I know it's.
Thanks for you coming.
To come out, we have to make sure of that and then it'll get scrutinized and those will happen. But we, we really. But we realize, you know, that to come out and waste your opposition, so in that sense, it has worked. The board has limited authority to deny conforming applications, but we'll see if they come here. So we realize you're sitting here, but, you know, from where I sit and the board determining, I think that's how this process is supposed to work, that's right, you will have the right to be heard. And just like the board has the right, and the applicant has the right to request revised application, keep coming back, there was something that.
Okay, I accept that, thank you.
And I. Please take your name for the record.
Howard Pomeranz.
Spelled your last name.
P-O-M-P-R-A-N-Z.
Can you ask your firm?
No, what's your comment, sir?
I live on fourteen eighty-three Cedar Row. I'm happy that we got to this point, that we're kind of revising the amendment, but speaking to both sides, you know, we're not sure where it's going to go, but we want to amend that road, also the submission of the new amendment to the, the plans. The road right now is on the back of Cedar Row, the developer said that.
On the west side.
On the west side, and the developer said he has no problem putting it on the, on the other side on Park.
Our east side.
On the east side, which is Park.
Park, to the park side.
Park side. So I'm just requesting that amendment, the new plans.
Well, you could, you could take the opportunity to speak to the applicant, that's their priority to make the application, if they, if they fit, they would probably be wise to listen to you, so we'll go through it the next time.
But that's my request, I think whatever plans are submitting now, is the road should be on the park side.
That's just the applicant, you have to address that.
The only other thing is, you have the people on park side, but they're going to want the road to be on Cedar Row.
We'll get to that.
You can come, you can come on this.
It's really not comments on the application.
I will let us speak.
People have been here, if they have an issue with it being determined, come back.
Would you like to say something? You can come by, but you have to go to the mic. Please take your name and spell your name for the record.
My name is Robin Gatten.
Spell your last name.
David Ian.
Okay.
And I live at two forty-two Parkside Drive. And I guess we're only supposed to be from, whatever, or nine. We have probably completed a journey around, but I really want to voice my opinion on our traffic, which has nearly killed three times, walking, okay, on, on our street, okay? I can't imagine all the traffic that's going to be coming out like a nap, seeing where all the men went down by bus.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, this goes to the merits of the application, and we're not at that point of proceeding at temporary convenience, but this is the way the process works, we're doing our best to do that.
Okay.
Okay, so the new date is going to be what?
November twenty-seventh. The applicant has advised that a large escrow check is required, submission provided in hand, which is like guaranteeing escrow of the applicant, and there's about zero dollars on the deed count, so any submission will require, we're ready to have an escrow check, and we're carrying the.
It, it, it is what it is, it's very important.
Mr. Wise, if you could reach out to Mr. York with your plans, hopefully by the next time, everything's run smoothly.
In fact, I just made an agreement with Mr. York that when we resubmit the plans, I'm going to send in a separate copy of the plans.
Let's try to work it out, because maybe it's beforehand.
Look, my, my whole thing here, you don't really know me very well, but my whole thing here is to get a sense of what the board and its professionals need to do, and I think they're very close to doing all.
Okay, thank you very much.
And ladies and gentlemen, who are here, thank you very much for your patience, we're sorry. You know, we're, we're very concerned what residents have to say, we understand the position this has on you, we're doing everything we can to make, but there's also a legal process that we have to follow, and unfortunately, these things sometimes take time and have to come back, so, sorry for the inconvenience, but that's, that's, you know, what, what the law says, and what we have to follow.
I just want to add that taking time is of that benefit, we're taking into consideration what the neighbors are saying.
And this has been a reduced application now, as a result of that.
Yeah, we're listening.
So, members of the public, we advise that the application of David Herzog, that's the twenty-three fourteen, ten fifty-two West County Line Road, has been adjourned, but will be continued on November, I suppose, twenty-seven, sorry, two thousand and eighteen, six o'clock, this meeting, we'll be no further notice, that's November twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, six o'clock, this meeting, no further notice. Okay, at that time, you'll have the opportunity to ask questions, make comments, talk to them, and, and hopefully.
And now I would just ask you, if you can please send out the tape tonight, forever wasn't written. It's still recording, huh? Maybe, Mr. Jackson, maybe something simpler, you just thought it was going to be there one, but this is everybody can vote, I mean. Mr. Jackson, Mr. Franklin has to go back to hear the original one, in order to vote.
Now they can see the movie, now.
Thank you. Mr. J, Mr. Jackson.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sable said he may have a conflict with the next application, so, we have Mr. Iserson, so it might fit, but on record, one of his questions.
So, number one, I live in the area, I don't know if it's a conflict, I don't think it's a conflict, I live on Love Street, but it's going to be your opinion?
Then two hundred feet, that's a, that's a wildfire. You know, to two hundred feet, you have to ask yourself, is number two objective, just like you can on any other case, it's kind of always the term a gut check, if you feel you can be fair and unbiased.
So I need your help with my dog. I, I did, I was approached by a member of the public, I actually seen here about a week ago, he's asking me what's going on over here on this application, and he referred into the township website, where he can obtain every old information. I wasn't influenced by any, any way, shape, form, by his opinion, I can listen to his opinion, I just don't know if that's a conflict, if it is, I'm stepping down, if it's not.
That is not a conflict, if somebody unsolicited contacts you and directs them to the township website and takes none of that into consideration, I think basically it's solely on the record.
One more thing, I, I did see a poster in Shool encouraging members of the public to come voice their opinion, some were negative opinions, I don't think it makes, it can influence me, it's in my opinion, I'm ready to hear the professionals. If you think it is, I'm stepping down, otherwise I'd like to stay, and.
No, I don't, I don't believe seeing the poster about this, we've had times in here where people come in here with pickets and signs saying vote no, there's no difference in that, you live in town, you're.
That individual just called me today, asking me, is it still being here? I told him yes, and I told him I'd be late, because we have three applications before that, I'm still doing it.
And I don't have the issue.
Okay, so let's start this application, we'll go on, and do, Mr. Vote when you're ready.
Chairman, looking at our public safety letter, there is one submission waiver for D I S, which we support, the applicant's given a special Russian investigation, which indicate that there are known special weapons on adjacent to the property, which will impact property, we support the waiver.
We have a motion, all in my name, Mr. Sable, laws, I said, is there a law in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
Section two, lot area, there are required several lots, as well as maximum building coverage in the Sidewalk Setback for the proposed immediate on lot nine. That being so, under design waivers, as indicated, the design waivers required to improve the residential toll ward must be approved to be R S A compliant, and currently designed and proposed under use will create an excess of two hundred fifty maximum average daily trips, therefore requiring a second means of access. The second is a design waiver for non-regular lot lines, which is common, and then finally curdateable lot lines, again, which is another common. I believe that's all the relief, is that correct?
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as I covered in the, the application, just like the previous application with Mr. Herzog, the board might think that that's not one of the oldest applications, but this application actually has been in place approximately two years. We have to split back, my original notice, my original letter was from almost a year ago, in fact, before this board, we put a similar application.
Notion.
Similar, but a similar application.
Notion.
But as we mentioned shortly, Harrogate was a prime contractor, I think, but they might definitely for themselves, but we worked very hard together with the neighbors to make sure that we get the best application possible, and make that work in the area, and we're looking for a private one. This is my candidate, Brian Flannery. You start from testimony, do you approach forward, or do you all just then?
I do, Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. As Adam indicated, this is an application that's got some history to it. I have two exhibits, eight one is the tax map showing our subject property, eight two is the G three of the plan submitted showing a layout of the proposal duplexes and the one triplex building. This, this application, what we had, our original review was from September, September of two thousand and sixteen, the first meeting we came to, which was December twenty-third of two thousand and sixteen, Harrogate came and they were objecting. And their, their objection is very simple to understand, very easy to pick, if you're looking on eight two, Harrogate entrance is right across from Evergreen Boulevard. Our original plan showed.
Which page is that from, Archie?
G three.
G three?
Our original application had us improving Evergreen Boulevard so that they would have conflicting traffic across the street. On January eleventh of two thousand and seventeen, not this year, the year before, I would have led us to force, submitted a conceptual plan, we came in with Harrogate and said, here's what we're thinking of doing, Harrogate had some property, Harrogate has, has their property that's not part of the application, so they can have a buffer, a long locust, and not have an entrance directly across from them. Now, we, we know.
Everybody's a paper street or something?
Evergreen is a paper street, it's a very wide paper street, one of those old.
Hampel Street, they're all paper streets?
Yes, yes, and, and this, the whole area, all the other paper streets that you see on eight one, G one forty-three of the tax map, are what I would describe as screening for development, because when you see trees in Lakewood, if there's no restriction on it, somebody's going to build theirs, and, and these paper streets will be built. We're hoping by this application, working with Harrogate over the two years, and working with the county, you know, with a lot of moving parts, the applicant brought other owners in, so that we could get enough owners to get in this block and have this come out here, so that when the other network is developed, you can have it. So it, it's a very long, torturous project that we got to this point, and now we're at the point where we think we have Harrogate setting up and say they're pretty part of the, and we've reviewed that, there was an email on, on their agreement, the applicant's having agreed with Harrogate, and I want to make part of the testimony that the applicant is agreeing with them, that agreement, and part of that agreement is that the preservation and seducative enhancement of that agreement in the buffer yard will be as per that agreement. So the, the buffer yard is referred to as the buffer along from Locust Street, and, and they have very particular landscaping that they want, they want to save trees, they want to do things that.
Where is Harrogate on Locust Street?
Harrogate's entrance is right across from Evergreen Boulevard. So Harrogate's a beautiful place, they want the partner around them to be beautiful as well, and we've worked with other applicants in this board, in the zoning board, to see where Harrogate participates in the approval process, so that, so that it's better, and a lot of the people that here are probably the units that will build and develop and that work with Harrogate, who may come in. And someone that here, probably around here, two years ago, when we started this process, which is that it's just on, oh, we have an existing forming application with the same eighty-five hundred square foot lots that came in off Evergreen Boulevard, and just comped up the, the existing ones. But let, let me finish reading what was in their agreement, that all, all the vegetation preservation is going to be per that agreement, and per that agreement, agreeing that no vegetation, tree or shrub shall be removed from areas beyond the limits of disturbance that are shown on the plant, and will also make symbols used for the existing trees, so that they're not ambiguous, so it's clear, and a key will be added, so that none of the vegetation that is supposed to remain is removed. More than ever, you might not know this, but a lot of times you grow plants and stuff, it's not, and it's not. We're going to be very particular, we're going to have the plan to work with the county through office and area to make sure that it doesn't happen. No vegetation shall be removed off site, particularly in the areas within the agreement and potential future buffer on Locust Street. No vegetation except that which is minimally required, I also can easily remove and prune within the buffer yard, and there'll be a statement noting where pruning would suffice the requirement, is preferential to remove the trees. Essentially, tree protection fence detail shall be revised to reflect, that protection fence shall be installed at the maximum practical distance from the tree trunks on the curb line. The normal detail is to do with curb lines, we're going to extend it to the maximum practical distance to give the trees more root protection. As detail information on the intended to maintain protection of, the pruning of trees and under discourage trucks as opposed to isolated trees, and that also the plan changes to reflect the disposition of each existing tree, the trees will be numbered, as to whether it's to be preserved or removed, so it's going to be perfectly clear, everybody, which trees are supposed to stay, and, and there'll be procedures so that the ones that are supposed to stay actually use them.
Let me go back to Evergreen Boulevard, Harrogate does not want Evergreen Boulevard to be paved.
They don't want it improved across from their entrance. If it's improved down in this area, certainly they understand this improvement down here, they want to look out here, hence it has to have a buffer of woods going straight across.
Why shouldn't we approve it on the other side, and eventually tie it to Temple or to Seventy, on the other side?
But it, it will get tied in either through June or Faray or Evergreen Boulevard and Temple after Seventy, the rest of the, the street areas will develop, and those other paper streets will develop, there's no reason to develop the paper street between June and Locust.
Where's June?
If you locate it one, you can see, June is the, is first paper street.
Your first paper street going down.
So there, there's no need to develop this, because what we've done in effect is relocate that over here with the, with Harrogate. So we have the same access out to Locust that we would have had, it's one access point, we're just offsetting from the entrance.
So to get it sprayed, the only thing Harrogate doesn't want, that from June to Locust should be the vote.
Correct.
Evergreen.
Correct.
Anything else is up for discussion?
Can I ask a question, Chairman?
Yes.
Going back to our design waiver comment about Evergreen Boulevard, we estimate that this is an excess of two hundred fifty trips a day, which would mean that it's not R S A S compliant unless you have a second means of access.
Correct.
So if you're not paving down Evergreen, how, how do you assess?
But my, my first response to that is that I think the trust and access to that would be a minimum succession, but I also feel that it's a temporary situation, and we could provide for emergency access, because a lot of times that's what's done, a boulevard gets put into a certain point, so it gets to twenty-five, we would prefer to provide some type of emergency access, and at the time of construction, we would provide that emergency access, so there's another way to get out, if this is blocked here, there'd be another way to get out. And, and if there are other developments that are being designed in that area, so there will be the availability to have the emergency access in a location that's consistent with the future development.
So if the board, I'm sorry, Chairman, if, if the board acts favorably on this application tonight, you agree that you're going to provide a second, a second emergency access per applicable council chair?
Correct.
How far are you from Route seventy?
You can see here that it's about a hundred and fifty feet from Route seventy. Route seventy is not really where you really want it now.
I know the state's in the lead.
It's a state highway, right. They might not want to do, the preferable access is probably out of Vermont. And then the whole area will be looped, and we have to have one access going out of Locust.
You don't have a good map on there. So Temple, you don't have a big map. Where's Vermont? For one at a time, please.
Here's the big map, here's Vermont. Here's our property, we're providing one access point.
Where's Evergreen? Where's Evergreen? Show me on that map.
Right there, that map is this map.
So show me where the second means of egress could be.
The second means of egress, based on development that I know, a plan that I know is occurring, would be down Evergreen and have two to Vermont.
And that just says how long?
Well, that's two hundred and then another six hundred, so eight hundred feet.
Terry, where's the hammerhead?
The hammerhead is here. We had originally shown a cul-de-sac here, and the comment in the report was that it would be better to build the future road improvements as a hammerhead. So that when that hammerhead is extended down to June and out to Vermont, it's actually there. When the people on Temple want to build, they'll extend this and come around Temple. And either punch out Route seventy or not, depending on what the state does.
So again, that hammerhead will come down, you'll pave Evergreen till June?
But it will provide emergency access. I don't think paving would be the right, because emergency access is something that a fire truck or an ambulance can do. So it would be clear and weight in some kind of a rapid pace so that when this development, other development actually goes on.
Will be signed, no?
Yes, yeah, it'll be a change of the designation to emergency access.
And Terry, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay.
It's going to be that for all council chambers.
Yes, yes. So the first thing I'd like to discuss, and I mean today with Terry and John, was respectively the report. The report indicates in zoning item on page three, sites within the B five A, duplex housing or permitted uses. The application is going to be due in accordance with the D two standards. And then a goal that says duplexes are not permitted conditional use of the zone. Therefore, the zoning database on section eighteen dash ten fourteen is not relevant. The Lakewood ordinance is very confusing. I played eight ten, it was not looking tonight, because he tells everybody that he had wrote it, and I did. I didn't put it in, but I did write it, it would have been much clearer. So eighteen dash ten fourteen says that if you have a conditional use of townhouses and a conditional use of duplexes, you can build your duplexes on eighty-five hundred square feet as long as you don't exceed the townhouse density. And the logic for that was, why do we want to push these buildings together and have townhouses? We'd get a much nicer development.
What, same density?
Same density. In fact, we could get an extra unit if we build all townhouses. Then we have townhouses and not nice duplexes. Then the applicant's not doing it because these aren't as nicer. The duplexes are better housing and it's better for you.
I want to interrupt Mr. Flannery. Where's the pool? Putting that aside.
That Harrogate, grocery. How many times?
You were here for the last case. We spent a lot of time looking at this today, Mr. Vogt, Ms. Morris, Mr. Flannery, and Mr. Vepfer today. And what I can, I think his, Mr. Flannery's analysis is correct. And what I could divine as the reason behind it is that, you know, where townhomes are allowed, there is a smaller area required if you want to do the alternative of duplexes. It makes sense if you look at it in that context. So instead of calling it duplexes, they could call it tennis, because you'd say, well, why have this ten thousand square foot restriction? And why, you know, go through all these gyrations? But there is a logic to it, because like I said, if you have, if you do townhomes anyway, the duplexes can be done for eighty-five hundred square feet.
Isn't townhouse open?
Well, there are, it's a slightly different product, but what the point is, the zoning ordinance says, well, if you're allowed to do townhomes anyway, then you can make them duplexes and only do them with eighty-five hundred square feet.
As opposed to townhomes in what?
As opposed to townhomes, which would have a similar density.
On ten thousand?
So density for the townhouses is eight minutes break. And section eighteen dash ten fourteen restricts it to, that's saying eight greater, and we're under the eight grade. So.
How many townhouses would you fit in?
We would get one extra town. We could have thirty townhouses or three townhouses and twenty-six duplexes. And when we submitted this two years ago, my layout of the ordinance, which I'll go through, so you understand it, was accepted in the territory's report back in September two thousand and sixteen, reviewed according to section E E dash ten fourteen. And other applications in block eighty-one right across the street where the duplexes are going up, were done and approved in accordance with that also. Because I think, feel very strongly that it's clear that that's the intent and we need the letter of the law. It's just confusing how you get there, because the Lakewood ordinance gets done, people pushing, gold pieces get put in, et cetera, and a comprehensive. And I didn't write. So here's how I get there, and I'll just go through it quick so that everybody understands. In the B five A, which is section F, it lists permitted uses, says all uses permitted in the B five. Also, multifamily residential, which may include two-family and duplex housing. And the duplex housing is in accordance with the D two zone. So if you do the duplex in accordance with the D two zone, we go to the D two zone. And that is still a little confusing, because in the D two zone, it said permitted uses, all uses permitted in the A one and R N zones, which is duplexes and townhouses. So now they're permitted, but according to section eighteen dash ten fourteen, we need to say they're conditionally permitted. But in the D two zone, we go to conditional uses, under D, it says townhouses. So now we have townhouses called as conditionally approved in the D two, which is the one thing we need to show. So now we have to show that duplexes are also conditionally permitted. And the townhouses that are conditionally permitted are in accordance with eighteen ten ten. When you go to section eighteen ten ten, under A three, it says, notwithstanding the definition of townhouses in this country, the townhouses may consist of two-family buildings or more. So what that says, and that was what I didn't say, is we don't allow, townhouses will be, we don't allow duplexes. So now we have duplexes allowed conditionally, townhouses allowed conditionally. We're in line with section eighteen dash ten fourteen, I mean, we do a lot of areas with eighty-five hundred as long as we don't exceed the density which we got.
Did you go to Los?
I just, I speak Lakewood ordinance, it's a different language. So based on that, it's my opinion that we don't need all those variances that are listed. We need all the variance that we're seeking is for the triplex unit. And we're seeking a side or setback for the triplex unit, because it says for townhouses, you should have a twenty-five foot side setback. We're asking for eight. In this particular case, when you drive through here, if we had twenty-five years of age, it would look silly. But we put the building forward, we get that Harrogate on the line, because they want the nice buffer along here. So we're providing a nice buffer along here, we're having side setback that's consistent with everything. So it's my testimony that that's the variance we need, we're asking for. And it's appropriate according to the justification we need to show. We also, we need variables, we also need lines of units, making more, more townhouse style. I mean, lines. If we push the duplexes together, then we'll have a bigger space in between, and then we have more townhouses looking to develop. This is the word duplex looking to develop. And it says C two variance, which is certainly my opinion, you know, that is out.
Unless you make a triplex, a duplex.
Well, we would take two, three duplexes and make two triplexes. So we have the same number of units and we have bigger spaces, and it would not be a time.
And triplexes is legal zones, where do they lie?
Yes, yes, they're conditionally permitted. So looking at Terry's report, I wanted to just go through where I did something that I rarely do, to say I have a different opinion than was in the report, and we met with John and Terry. And as John indicated, he followed the logic and it makes sense. I have two talks about minimum lottery requirement, which we don't need when you use section eighteen dash ten fourteen. I have three talks about building cover variances, which we don't need when you use section eighteen dash ten fourteen. I have four is the minimum side or setback for the one side of the one triplex, which I just explained. My testimony on why the board should rent that. First of all, this is not the only application that anybody's seen in.
Four of them.
It's actually a very nice application, and it's a nicer one now. The applicant jumps through roofs to come up with an application, they have two years that the neighbor across the street is good with it. And anybody good with it means it's good for the area. And that's part of what we need to show in order to get that.
Your chart doesn't show any variances, right?
You've got, you've got variants.
I hope it is charged, if it doesn't, so the bottom was going to get. So the justification for that, I want to see the variance is, we look at the master plan, which goes about smart road, which we heard about tonight, but on page two, it goes about strip road. On page three, the conclusion is, based on the information, it's important that Lakewood plans residential development to have control of population. On page seven, the same master plan, they said that we courage, we grow the development in appropriate locations consistent with the staff and plan uses. The fact that we have a neighbor across the street that is coming out, supporting this, and we worked two years to have a plan that they they like, is my testimony, we certainly do that. Providing sufficient education recreational to meet the needs of the area, providing the open space for all of those people building for the unit. The municipal land use law, and A, before it's called, if you buy a D two, under the purpose of the act, encourage and supply, guide the appropriate development of the rural and the state, and manage the health, safety, and overall and general welfare. And as my testimony, we do that. E, about the establishment of appropriate population density concentrations that will contribute to well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, regions, and preservation of the environment. As my testimony, we do that, we could have had a density higher with townhouses, we could have gone even higher with multifamily. Multifamily, we're allowed seventeen units break. So the C two variance, we need to show that it relates to a specific piece of property. When you look at eight-one, you see where this property is, which is next to the Harley Davidson. We have these condo projects, we have Harrogate across the street. It's certainly a unique location that's just getting the development pressure. The purposes of the municipal land use law, which I just read, would be advanced. The variance could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and I think having Harrogate here supporting us certainly weighs heavily on that. The variance will not inherit the intent and purpose of the zone plan in zoning ordinance. And the one de minimis variance that we're requesting, which to me makes sense, I believe, testifies to that. And the benefits have substantially outweighed the detriment. As my testimony, there are no detriments, and the benefits are the development in accordance with the.
What's the immediate use of the orange brown?
He says the Harley Davidson.
That whole brown?
Yes. So looking at Terry's report, in addition to the variances, the design waivers he went through, and we talked about the R S I S compliant sidewalk, road, the side lot line, which is pretty typical in order to make a development of this nature work, and certainly two years of working on and balancing with other property owners to get everybody in, to get a cohesive design. He points out any subdivision would be subject to the township committee vacating the pieces that we need vacated. And the applicant and Harrogate worked with the township committee over that two-year period so that they would see the benefits of this, so that we're not doing this for nothing. But obviously, we need that.
Can you show me the bus circulation?
Well, the bus circulation, this is going to be developed, we're going to have Evergreen and have June. You know, I have the other plan right underneath there, if you want me to pull it out and show it to you.
What do we do till the bus, till June gets developed?
Till June gets developed, it's a cul-de-sac except a forty-foot radius there that they wanted to turn around. My, I was on the board of education, and my philosophy was always, we're not running taxi service. They don't do it in Jackson, the kids don't get picked up at their door. The bus stops on Locust, the kids are all waiting down there. And I know it's not one bus, but you know, if there's ten buses that go by, the kids wait on.
You've got hundreds of kids over there. Thirty houses?
Yeah, and it's one bus stop that the kids wait for, they get on the bus and once they go.
Mr. Chairman, is there a rule within the car way that was the bus could pull on?
Yeah, and again, it's a temporary situation, because once the other piece gets developed, and I mean, how do you put it up and show it to you? New lines did a lot of work, and working on the application, which will be submitted soon. But once that's in, you have that circulation, and then the bus is going to be pulling in, and it's going to be stopping wherever it picks up the maximum.
That temporary take for years too? Knowing Lakewood not, right?
I'm betting yes, yes.
Well, like you said, there's no circulation.
It has to work even on a temporary situation.
Yes, right, yes. But it's.
Doesn't show it on the.
The inside of that, it would be like a forty-foot radius, but my.
How long is the point, what, north to south? How many feet?
You're talking on. In a hammerhead, it is probably ninety feet.
How old is the bus?
The buses are in the thirties. But my testimony is that a bus could pull in here, back into there, and pull out. If you have a regular cul-de-sac, there's cars parked on it. The bus is never turning around on a cul-de-sac. I haven't seen one cul-de-sac where a bus can turn around. This configuration, nobody's going to be parking in these hammerheads, except in unusual situations, not when the buses are coming. And this provides.
Right, there's not going to be signs that say no parking.
Yes, you have signs indicating no parking.
But a bus can make a turn?
Yes, a bus could absolutely make a turn.
So Frank, will you agree with him? Buses, buses, you got trucks, they won't turn around over there?
And we would petition, we'd write letters to the town, asking for the no parking sign. We can't put them on ourself, but there's no reason the town will do that. The town is on board with this project, because they see two neighbors, well, it's actually more than two. It's Harrogate and all these property owners working together.
Do you know that it's illegal for a bus to back?
Yes.
With kids on the bus?
Yeah.
Have the bus home?
My plan, and I said it when I was on the board of education, they didn't listen to me, that this bus would stop on Locust. I see, I see many buses back out, I see them pulled sideways, because they do things, and the drivers are trying their best to provide for the safety of the children, so they do things they're not allowed to.
I have an issue, a hundred kids standing on Locust.
Well, by the time there's a hundred kids, because the people that are buying these have young kids. By the time their kids are grown and going to school, that other street will be empty.
And that's even scarier, because Vermont, having an entrance on Vermont, I live right there, on that corner, Vermont and Locust, is probably an accident once a day, maybe every second day, including rollovers. Vermont is a highway. Literally, literally, it's literally a highway, almost, not maybe it's on the, it's a county road, but it's cars driving very, very quickly. Having school buses coming out and maybe a left, I mean, the left turn onto Vermont is extremely dangerous.
They should do, they should, they should come in and come out, come out here. So they come out on Locust, they come in on Vermont, and they come out on Locust.
That can be a one-way street?
No, that's up, that's up to the transportation.
But up until that happens, there's no. But up until that happens, these buses are unable to go inside, you agree with that?
Yes, yes.
This is proposing no entry.
No, no buses inside, that's what, that's what we're proposing.
It means it's about ten buses a day, or more.
Once the kids get through.
Spanish, sorry, about ten buses a day on Locust, stopping, a big dog, stopping, a big dog, having three hundred kids wait on Locust. Which is about, the traffic report says a few hundred cars, I think, one, whatever, we can argue, a few hundred cars being stopped, going, crossing, and out. You can get saved, you can make some more money.
But as I, as I testified, what I've seen with these type of units is the people that buy either have no kids or they have young kids. Uh, they're more the younger, recently married couples, so their kids aren't going to be going to school at first. And within a year, this other development is going to be.
I tend to disagree with that, I, I would love to buy it, nice and cheap, and I have all the kids, ten-year-old, disability, I would be very basic in having one on Locust. It's a, it's a real heavy traffic road.
Well, we, we, we have these, we incorporate, we have to work with Harrogate because they're part of the application, we have to incorporate a bus stop.
It is my, it is my opinion, just to force to know.
It makes more sense, like a bus stop.
It is my opinion. We can make, we can figure out somewhere.
We can, we can finish up our, our traffic engineer.
We're talking about the bus.
Brian, instead of a Hammerhead, a cul-de-sac, it doesn't fit.
We have, we have a RSIS compliant forty-foot, uh.
Then the bus can get a full turn.
They can as long as nobody's parked.
Because what?
They can as long as nobody's parked.
I understand, so. I would like maybe a cul-de-sac until the road gets developed, then open it up.
We have no check, we reserve a.
Terry, what's your opinion on that?
Again, the cul-de-sac bowl is a large rarity when it comes down to enforcement. If people park there illegally, they don't have traffic, no matter what.
They can park on the Hammerhead also, same little people, they're going to do that, same little parking.
There's certainly more space on a cul-de-sac bowl. Cul-de-sac bowl is RSIS compliant, RSIS compliant, it's a regular radius.
And then the bus could turn around.
There are no standards on turn.
Could we make it, Mr. Jackson, it should be statute thirty-nine, whatever it is?
Well, statute thirty-nine would apply anyway, because that is, that will be a public road.
That is, you know, I don't know.
So you're not even putting a rail, because it's just, you're not putting a rail around, or sidewalk, or opening concrete curve in that bowl, because it's going to be a street bowl.
Eventually.
Why, why should we attempt a bowl if that's what the board wants?
That's what I understand, why did the township want it? Is that what you're saying, Brian?
Uh, the R V E report said build the improvements that are ultimately going to be there. We'd be happy to.
Could you build a bowl that eventually will turn into a regular road?
We could, we could put a bowl then, and, and we would, uh, when, when the other development comes in, we would convert our portion of the bowl to the Hammerhead.
Can I, Mr. Harrell, I interject, maybe what the applicant could be required to do if the board is inclined to pass this application. Take it to the administration, to the municipal engineer. And ask what would be preferable from an enforcement and design, you know, it's better to have a cul-de-sac that would be, you know, changed back into this type of configuration.
Not, not, not to change this, to change the eventual road to connect to June, because eventually they're going to pave Evergreen and go out to June.
I've seen cul-de-sacs, but I mean, the cul-de-sac is still there and then they have the intersection going through the cul-de-sac.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, if the board wants to do a bowl, there should be notes on the plan clearly that this is a temporary bowl. And that is going away, figuring where it's going to be. I'll tell you why, we've had applications where they'll put in a temporary bowl, which we can have access to. Until the point where it builds up. Somebody buys that property, oh, that's my property, that's why this is going to be correct. And they plan for it, they plan driveways, front yards.
I want this house at the end, cul-de-sac, this is great, and then one day, this is beautiful.
Be careful what you're doing, I'm fine either way, but it has to be communicated that it's a temporary, it's temporary.
The applicant, the applicant will build whatever the board wants there, because we can do either or, or some combination. And we'll put all the notes that'll make the, the township engineer's office. And Mr. Schmuckler advised me that a year ago, when they started designing, they spoke to Jeff in the township engineer's office, and he agreed with you that the bowl was better. Well, we submitted the review engineer in our.
For the record, Jeff is the inspiration.
Yes, yes. Uh, so, so if you ask three engineers how they think to do it, you're going to get three different answers.
You ask me, I would like you to develop the road to Vermont right now, but it's not happening, you know?
Right, right, so we, we certainly have the room to make it available for a bus to turn around. We can, we can even make it a forty-five foot, uh.
What's the widest you can make it?
We'll make it as wide as we can make it, I know the forty-five fits, which is five feet more than RSIS, we'll make it so that it touches all the corners. And we'll put in the biggest one that, that physically fits. And we'll put notes on the plan so that you have to not speak English in order to be able to say, I don't understand. Uh, and, and we'll, we'll petition the town to have no parking there.
No coming back to respond.
I, I will do it, I can't, I'm preparing, I.
We're not going to have curbs around that bowl, which is going to allow for future accidents.
Brian, you agree that finishing Evergreen will be a tremendous benefit for the kids, for the community, except for Harrogate. About three hundred kids, thirty families will benefit and have a tremendous amount of safety, added safety, and decency by finishing Evergreen. I understand that Harrogate is not happy with that, but you understand having it due, having it inaccessible to RSIS, it's beautiful, that's what I think.
I, I, I understand what you're saying.
Going, going through June, going through June, is, is putting so many kids, so many residents of further of this development, going through onto, even if only a right turn, onto Vermont, is extremely careless, reckless, and dangerous. Having it finished in Evergreen is a tremendous, I, Harrogate is not going to be happy, and they might not be happy, and if you could just, Harrogate, think about it and figure out a different way. But having it not finished, but in that.
When, when you look at A one. The weight is, the weight is.
We don't have a phone right now. Brian, you don't have a phone. Two guys walked out. What?
I'll go take it to the listener. No problem. Okay, I can have another call, okay, back to session, no problem. Brian and Mr. Fetter, we want to work together with Harrogate. The best layout would be, so we do pave the whole Evergreen and go back out to Locust, make a buffer circle. And Harrogate does not want that, I understand that.
And, and that's not going to be RSIS compliant, because the two roads are too close. That's why there's a little layout, and we want.
How close are then, how big is the gap?
Uh, how many requires two hundred fifteen feet?
Of what?
From, from sound line to sound line, so you need two hundred fifteen feet from, from sound line to sound line to sound line to that.
And how, how, how much is that?
Uh, we are at, uh, a hundred and twelve plus fifty.
Can we overrule that, if we can cancel that?
Overrule the county?
No, RSIS, I mean, before, before violating the RSIS or the coordination, can we do something that have?
Just, just so, so you're aware, this property is owned by several property owners. Harrogate is part of the application, so Harrogate says we don't want this, Harrogate's out of the deal. Now we go back to the ability of this, where, yes, Evergreen will come out, but you only have one road coming out. And it comes out, of course, Harrogate's entering.
And then it'll be connected to Barry and June, and they'll do yours.
Well.
We're talking about this application now.
He's pulling back the curtain one other time, one other time. Which, which plan is this?
This is, uh, the light office, or who likes it, uh, getting ready to submit, and you can see.
Before you start, Brian, this is irrelevant, this application, because we don't know what's going on, that's what I think. We don't know what's going to happen, it's not approved, we don't know if nothing's going on, that's my thing.
Want, do they have any applications depending on that? That we have, we get from that?
They're submitting tomorrow.
So they do like. Sorry, in my opinion, I'm not.
But that's just to show you that it's a reality, but as you're saying, if, if we have one entrance here, we, we still have one entrance on Locust where the buses, uh, come. So that's, that's going to be the same situation, moving from the here to where I'm at. Well, why would it be different?
Because that's the one developed road, no, no, no house, no side, it's facing that way.
But it's.
Nice, safe road, country road, uh, country roadway, a wide roadway, the cars running from this development, the next community development that's coming in and out. Having all the cars pushed out through one road, and the next road will be June onto Vermont, it, it, it is ridiculous.
Well, this is going to be pushed out through one road, and this will have outsize, because this is going to develop differently.
So, so we're forcing something that changes. Because Harrogate, I mean, we have to accommodate, that's what we can't do.
I mean, it's not dangerous, because we have one entrance on Vermont, and one entrance on Locust, this way, and we have one by the current.
Having an entrance on, on Vermont is eliminated, maybe, rather than. Or somehow figure out having it, add another roadway, or further off, we could make another roadway. Instead of the situation, you have to deal with it. We need the full access.
Our, our traffic engineer can certainly address the traffic concerns of.
Just one second, one second, please, one second. Brian, Brian has told us that they're going to be submitting plans tomorrow to develop June, right? To, to develop June?
Yeah.
Can we ask them to get together with that and pave the entire way, all the way to Vermont, from June all the way down to, to Evergreen?
Well, I think you certainly have the tenure authority sufficient to make them develop and have to that road.
No, so one second, Mr. Jackson, continue, because then on the Hammerhead, they should do Evergreen till June, and then turn on to June.
Right, there's Evergreen, follow, follow down off the Hammerhead, yep, and then right, no, even so, go back up, right, there, make a left.
And June, and June goes till, one other time, please, June goes, I think, after Vermont. Okay, the problem is, we want to try to finish up the grid over here, have cars go, not making Hammerheads or cul-de-sacs, finish up the grid that the buses can go in. They can come in on Locust, go out Vermont, go in Vermont, come out Locust.
There should be a way in and a way out, out of Hammerhead.
You could facilitate that by, um, making the, the June, I'm sorry, this parallel street being proved.
Let's just put on the redwood street, that's, Evergreen, that's it.
I, I didn't hear reference from the applicant on a way for, for making Evergreen, but the project does front of Evergreen, right?
Right.
RSIS compliant.
Doesn't matter, the front is, it's a right of way, the property front is, so you need to bring the way.
Mr. Jackson, the deal with. One at a time. Okay, Mr. Jackson, no, the, the deal with Harrogate is from June till Locust will not be, that's this area, the, the, no, we're talking about this area.
You're talking about the middle piece of Evergreen?
Yeah, the middle piece of Evergreen.
Till the Hammerhead.
First part.
And then to the, to the June to Vermont. Now, this is all frontage or this property, I'm confused, they have front, this old. Back frontage. The back, whatever, rear frontage, the deal with Harrogate, they're not.
What about that front?
Yeah, 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 Harrogate doesn't want this development, because it's their opening here.
Chairman, why would this applicant be required to improve the portion of Evergreen, not because of Locust proportion and wood capacity? So what did you have?
That's where, that's where.
This applicant would agree to that. This applicant can agree from coming out to Locust, like you said, Harrogate would throw in, so we go back to the front.
Then, frankly, council for Harrogate here would be, uh.
We can write, so it's kind of cross Locust. So now you have a cross Locust, but they, they have been, they're going in.
They have been writing over there?
No, 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 it's not, they're, they're going.
They can make one?
Yes, yes, designed there with the island, but it's not.
We all have to speak at once, because we're making a record, and when you have three people walking here, four people walking there, the record becomes a mess. And that's what you're worried, so Mr. Fetter, I'm sorry. We recognize.
Okay, yes, please.
Okay, and let's, let's try very carefully to be recognized through the chair if it won't be there.
This applicant agrees, they, here, this section.
June.
Till June.
Okay.
You have the extra, now for that a little further, we, this section, I'm done.
Now, could you show me the other apps, and I'm not the attorney on that. I know, but, but Brian, you want to show me, will that continue on June? Down goes faith of command.
Now, we're willing to, you know, help to be, some of the issues by having a second bringing awareness, all they have to do is.
And we're saying we'll build that, and, and, and as we indicated before, on the RSIS compliant, we'll provide an emergency access through there. No curve, no finish.
The buses can't go in there.
Non-stop, non-stop, a, an emergency action.
The buses cannot go there.
Correct.
So we still need a, a temporary cul-de-sac to turn around there, no?
Correct.
I mean, we still do it on the top.
Yes.
What's the paper street at the top of the section?
Derek.
Derek.
And they made it online.
Thank you, so you're going to take Evergreen from you to that?
Correct.
For every side, both sides?
About one side. We, we all, the other people.
Okay, continue, one at a time.
The only, the only thing I wanted to finish up, uh, is going to see a little.
Brian, I'm just saying, you understand where we're coming from, we want the grid finished, it should be safe for buses to make a full turn, not backing up, no Hammerhead, no. I, I understand, there's going to be hundreds of kids in there, we need safety, we can't, we got to wait for safety.
So, um, the only other thing I had highlighted was the landscaping, the state tree commission recommended three things. Uh, we're happy to do A and C, uh, we don't want to do B, which is not required by the U S ordinance, uh, buffer landing, uh, six eighty feet, call it ten, ten, twelve feet on center. It's not required by the ordinance, we don't want to do it, obviously, the developer will buffer and, and do landscaping, uh, in accordance with the desires of the future buyer. We will do A, A and C.
You're going to give them.
They always get crazy recommendations, some crazy, not so crazy.
Where are they going to buffer to?
In the rear of each unit.
Mr. Franklin, what's your opinion, going through with all the roads over here, what's, what's your opinion? Should we make a cul-de-sac Hammerhead, should we pave it to June?
Brian said Evergreen will never go through, because it'd be a hundred foot, it won't be two hundred foot from the other street.
Sorry.
So you're going to have to figure out another way, if this other project's coming in next week. We'll see how that road works out, so we can tie all this road, then make that the other road going out.
I know, so should we wait on this application until it comes in?
I would, so we see the other road. It's a separate application, but it'll be up at the next meeting. It's a separate application, but it'll be up at the next meeting. So, this is why you guys hurt themselves.
What we're saying is, we're, we're doing a temporary, uh, like one cul-de-sac or hammerhead, we're going to do either one of those, we have one, but then, no hammerhead, and paving, uh, Evergreen, that all the way to June, so, now, the next, we're, the next applicant, all they have to do is figure it out, and they're gonna have to do it for developing along June anyway.
The next application's on June, right?
Yes.
I, I personally feel comfortable if we do a hammer, not a hammer, a cul-de-sac, a temporary cul-de-sac, and pave to June. I don't know what the rest of the board feels, but, like, like, this bus can turn around, we don't have a safety issue on the buses, and eventually, we're gonna have a full, the, the grid will be completed.
All right, Kevin, with the encouragement, the sidewalk's coming down, the other piece is going to June.
We're gonna do one, two, three, our side, uh, both sides, sidewalk on ours.
That, that would work.
Would work.
Would work, do a head.
And, and put in a hammerhead or a cul-de-sac?
For the bus.
Temporary, that's what you feel, better than the bus, Vermont.
We're fine.
Single, what's your?
I, I think it's a crazy idea to have, to force all the buses, cars, residents of the entire neighborhood, which could be a couple of hundred houses or families, to force them all out, either through that, through a road, or through June. I don't know, John, do you think of Vermont and Locust? It, it, it's, I'm not sure, I've been there, one time, second day, for either rollover, or serious accident, having all the cars, especially- You need to be telling me, you're right. It, 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 it's crazy, it's crazy what's going on, this is a blinking light that doesn't, doesn't nothing.
Well, the, the zooming light will probably change the traffic.
Yeah, no, 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 no clients, no clients, we're trying to, like, stop trying to wear your helmet.
Thanks for having me, I, I love this in Vermont, so, you keep having it, you're always talking, he's in contact.
Okay, so, if you're asking my opinion, I think it's, it's ridiculous to have all of a, everybody go in and out, or some of the path to June, rather than from Evergreen, and if it's not an ideal for the public, then, I mean, we have an issue, but it doesn't mean you put so many kids away.
Okay, fine, then. I think maybe, before we continue, we should hear from the traffic.
I do, Scott Kennel, with the gun and race ocean.
We have a copy of, you can get to the-
It should be, it's dated, uh, September twenty-sixth, twenty-seventeen.
A year ago?
A year ago.
A year ago, the traffic report.
So, there's more traffic, you think?
Yep.
So, Dan, walk us through, and just answer the question, you've heard of this?
Well, just as first, I wanna qualify, as far as Locust Street, the traffic volumes are in a lower order as compared to, uh, many of the other streets in the area, either New Hampshire, Vermont, where they're in a range of two-way traffic flows, and a range of three hundred fifty, three hundred seventy, three hundred feet hours, and now, it's evident that we did our level service analysis at the side access, without consideration for these ultra-access points out of Vermont, but considered all access to and from Locust, where projected to be a B-level service.
Have you considered all the rest of the wooden houses, but in my-
Well, I did, I took into consideration of all the other houses that are being built now on Locust out through Route Seventy, that was traffic city analysis, but I think what's important to note is, I had a meeting with Ocean County, week and a half ago, they are currently designing the traffic segment, Vermont, and, and Vermont and Locust, and planning on doing that in the short term.
Short term is?
My sense is a year, two years, uh, but they're actively, it's on the radar, isn't it, it's not one of these things where they're proposing that, John, they're in the design process right now.
But before Route Nine gets wide and bright, right?
Yes, yes. But that, that, that's all tied into other improvements they're doing along Locust Street, they're gonna look to other ways to, uh, improve traffic flow and safety along Locust, so they're evaluating all those issues, they know some issues with parking along certain sections of Locust Street, and that's all being part, parcel to the intersection improvements, which, again, they've recognized this for many years, that, uh, Locust and Vermont, Vermont needs improvements, and they've gone ahead and initiated that process, and, uh, I can't tell you whether it's ten months, but it's within a two-year timeframe, that, uh, traffic signal will be installed, that location.
And how far north-
That, that would work out per, perfect with the construction of this?
Exactly.
If the time of this development, we finish it up, that light would be in there, I would rate it, so it would all work.
How far north of that is June Street, off the traffic green?
Uh, well, we're looking at the tax gap, it's approximately two hundred feet, June's approximately two hundred feet north of Locust.
Which is close, close enough, for, for, for having cars coming in and out of here, traffic light, driving-
Well, I mean, you have the traffic light, you're gonna have the new traffic light at Locust, you have the traffic light in Seventy, with those two traffic signals, it helps to organize the traffic, to provide gaps that are not creating asphalt. In my opinion, it's gonna be a better situation when they have the traffic signal, this will be other, uh, benefits, of, of the developments, whether around Vermont, or Locust, with the traffic signal, because it can create these interruptions on a regular basis in the category. In my opinion, not only for the intersection, but for the adjacent driveways, it's gonna be a benefit.
How many cars do you think, once we have a red light over there, coming down south from Route Seventy, we'll actually be stationed at nine o'clock, waiting for the light to come through?
At nine, Locust, at-
I'm sorry, Vermont, you're sorry, Vermont, Locust, yes, coming down, cars coming, coming, I believe the light thread.
I, I don't have those traffic council meeting tonight.
I think that's very important.
But I, I've done traffic council there, and that's all been factored into the county's design of that intersection. Uh, the traffic council, I conducted as part of this application, were done on Locust and Harrogate, to understand the traffic, uh, dynamics of that development.
Scott, please, but, in your report, what, what level, um, does this, uh-
The side access will result in a north-south approach, left and right turn onto Locust, operate level service B, or an average delay of eleven seconds, which is much better than the desirable of a level service C to D, and left turns into this development, be a level service A, so, as the report documented, that access into the twenty-nine dwellings will operate safely and efficiently.
Just, just to recap, so, the traffic will be in, coming in and out of the property, we have a portion of Evergreen where, that, well, right, as, as Frank indicated, it never be paved, because less than, you're, it's amount, uh, less than forty feet from the next, uh, entrance, uh, in your opinion, does this traffic flow work, especially for temporary, for, for school buses?
Yes, based on the discussion earlier, with forty-five foot, uh, radius on the cul-de-sac wall, it's my opinion that, uh, this plan as presented will operate safely and efficiently.
How many school buses do you think will happen?
How many school buses? You got close to ten, during the morning, and afternoon, and if you provide the design at a forty-five foot base, which can accommodate a full-size bus, this operates safely.
How long do these school buses?
The length of, the wheelbase, it's a forty-foot wheelbase, and the total length of the bus is approximately fifty feet.
And this is a bolted, uh, harness?
Forty-five foot raise, or ninety feet diameter, and that's, should have proven, showed that a bus can turn within that cul-de-sac size. I mean, we provide templates for the board, but, uh, you know, we've done the same time, compared, uh, but a forty-five foot works for still.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, this, this all work, Derek, uh, I know, uh, this, uh, we're, uh, we're just, uh, Harrogate also having the application.
Okay, there's holes again?
There, there's still, there's part of the application, and anybody, just correct it off.
Okay. Mr. Nara? What's that? I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay.
Um, I'm just going to be real. I'm going to talk about the new work we're doing. As Mr. Frank and Mr. Butler were saying, you know, the super bowl process was discussed this night. I mean, we're often being a member of the union in hearts. But there are actors, you know, it is not all right. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm from Manhattan, everyone should hear me. Um, Mr. Benjamin's going to come up, he's Executive Director of Harrogate. And he's going to talk about some of the other concerns, but-
Wasn't addressed yet?
Well, you know, we own part of the property. So we're not trying to be duplificated. But I think, you know, we were entitled to a few minutes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just a little, um, taken aback by some of Mr. Sable's remarks. He did say, you know, before, before the meeting, he raised the question of, you know, he'd seen, you know, he'd seen a sign on the shore. You know, he wondered if he had a problem. And I understand, you know, he's been very forceful about that, I appreciate it. But I'm, you know, not, uh-
One thing-
Is there a better time to have the brought up with the beginning when I don't want to take them down?
Well, I think, yes, but he said he thought he could be, you know, he would define it.
I think we see the whole board, everybody were very concerned about traffic.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but you know, he said that he's not biased by that. It's not going to affect his judgment. That doesn't preclude him from having a robust analysis and, you know, taking a hard look at any application. Which I think is any board member's right. For argument's sake, he doesn't, you know. So we don't know which way he's going to vote. And the fact that he's asking hard questions like I do sometimes, right? Sometimes it doesn't push, it doesn't mean you're leaning more or you have an issue with the story of the issue. So what's your, you have an issue with the San Francisco case?
I'm just surprised by it. Do I have an issue with it?
Yeah, well, you go to the table. You have an objection to the San Francisco case.
You know, before we address this, we may find this, you know, this is a month or a year.
That's up to the chairman.
What? A what?
And I think we're going to, we may be, we're going to have to switch anyway. Because your Benjamin's just just said, and your question, can we continue on?
No, we may have to continue it. And why do you say when will be the next conference?
What do you want to talk with your client about? Or do you have, want to raise an objection? Why don't you take 30 seconds?
Well, I think we should, we're in a stop for five minutes. We're not going to do that.
How long do you think, how long do you need from your side? I'm not rushing.
I, I, I'm pretty, I'm originally, I was about five minutes. It's time enough to give some things to come on. And I don't know, you know, if you're going to do it here, I don't think you want to hear.
Can you give us 30 seconds?
Yeah, sure.
No. No, all I wanted to do was just, you know, put on the record, you know, remarks that, you know, that I've addressed, that Tesla, you know, that there's some suggestion perhaps that maybe was a little more, well, I'm not going to say biased, but I was, I was just surprised by something. But having said that, I'd like to bring my client up and just wanted-
You object to being on the board or not?
I'm just bringing it on the record, so.
Don't object, what have you done with that? Now, in my view, if somebody sees a sign or if somebody in an unsolicited manner comes up to them and says, you know, what's going on with this application? They say it's either the board secretary or online. I don't think that qualifies them.
Mr. Jackson.
I mean, if it's hit, none of us judge that.
Mr. Jackson, I don't think it's fear when somebody's asking hard questions. I guess it's qualified if you think he's on the road up. I mean, we've all been everywhere, Mr. Sables, I don't find it to be any more biased. On this application-
I didn't understand what you said, I lost.
I don't think when an applicant sees that somebody is asking hard questions and would disqualify him because he asks questions about safety issues. I think we, everybody's saying that, right?
I think you've had applications that are in the area of other board members' homes or businesses, whether they are not within 200 feet. I mean, maybe you're a client in the area and other board members may have knowledge of the area.
Okay, Mr. Frank, me, everybody on the board was asking questions about safety, about buses and about the roads, so. I was concerned about the posters, so I'm asking you a question again. Are you object to meeting on the board? It's okay if yes, it's okay if not. You like to stay your opinion.
I'm just putting it on the record, so.
What are you putting on the record?
Should we judge it now?
What are you, what are you keeping on the record? You said, I just want to put it on the record. What do you want on the record?
Just, you know, my, my words about what I saw.
Are you object to being on the board? Because you're the attorney or applicant.
I'm not the only attorney.
You are an applicant.
I'm one of the faculty.
Are you okay with me being continued to hear your application or not? I think we have to know that now, to know if it continues. I have a ground setting aside if you think, if anybody has no objection to that. If you think that I'm not okay, there's a conflict, I'm not. It's the law, and I doubt it would reflect that. I don't think it's fair to start again. To send off a board manager because he asked a question. On the record that she does not reflect, that's all, or she does?
I, you know, I-
It's a funny question, it's never come out before, but I'm asking.
Do you mind opening your ears to positions that the value you are having talked about? As for you, you didn't make the point you asked me because I heard you have nothing. You have an issue with we're, because you're not in the main decision. So it's just like, I'm not supporting you here and then you're against others.
Mr. Sable, Mr. Sable, it is always, it is always your right and privilege if somebody looks at you and says they want you to step down because they think it's a conflict, to either step down or not step down. You know, maybe you don't want to deal with the headache, maybe you don't want there to be any issue, but it's also your right to say, there's not a conflict, I'm staying up here because I'm not going to step down just because I ask hard questions and somebody doesn't like the way it's going. But that's up to you, I want to let you know. You still have the right to step down if you want.
You see, he's saying- I have to put the gentleman's nomination with this, because I'm going to pass the question. Okay.
Okay, please continue.
How long do you need to speak? I'm not rushing you.
No.
What happens after that? I'm not rushing you, you have to table it. I'm not rushing you.
I don't have a lot.
Okay.
Please raise your right hand, you swear from Tesla, I'll give you for support. You should all hear the nothing, but please proceed.
Please speak in English.
Charles Benjamin, B E N J A M I N. I'm the Executive Director of Harrogate. A little bit about Harrogate, it opened in 1988, 30 years ago. It's on 52 acres. There's 600,000 square feet of building. Harrogate is a continuing care retirement community. It is a age-restricted community. You must be age 62 or over to move there and to live there. Right now, we have approximately 300 independent living residents. And we have approximately 55 residents who live in the skilled nursing facility. Of those 300 independent living residents, oh, by the way, our average age at Harrogate is age 88. Yeah, and so half of those individuals still drive in our vehicles. And in addition to that, there's 300 employees. We have three shifts, 7:00 to 3:00, 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM. 24/7, 365-day in need of operation.
What was the hours of change?
Uh, 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM. We, uh, we also have a 77,000 gallon pool, by the way. Just so the board wants to be aware.
Trying to have a pool.
Sorry for speaking out of turn earlier. So it is a vibrant community, Harrogate. We do have, as I said, half of our population who are independent residents. They live in their apartments, they control their own affairs, their financial affairs, their medical affairs, and their own transportation affairs. So when we sat down with Mr. Schmuckler and the developers from Locust Holdings, we were concerned about, obviously, the aesthetic appearance of Harrogate. As you can, if you drive by there, you see a setback. There is a wooden buffer. You don't see too much of the 52 acres and the 600,000 square feet of building because of setback. And over the past 30 years, there's been some development there along Vermont Ave. But none so far on Locust. And so we know that's coming, and we do not object to that. However, what we'd like to do is maintain, obviously, the aesthetic appearance of what we've had, what the community has. But in addition to that, we recognized when we sat down and looked at the master plan and looked at Evergreen Boulevard and the paper wrote that that's a direct line road, if we will, from our entrance and exit. You two have served-
That's a date forever.
It has, yes, sir.
Before you bought the property?
I did buy the property, but whoever, yes, sir. But understand, we have people who, about 150 drivers there, who average age 88, who drive, who have diminished vision, hearing, and reflexes. And our opinion was that having Evergreen Boulevard built directly across could pose some potential safety hazards for all involved. Not just Harrogate residents, but the residents, the future residents across the street who will be moving in there, our neighbors. That's a paramount concern to us. And I think it should be to this board as well. And I implore you to really look hard at this application. We spent two years with the interested parties making sure that not only was it investors of Harrogate, but our future neighbors. And if there's any takeaway tonight, remember, we're neighbors, we're good neighbors. We continue to be good neighbors, but we have to look out for one another. School buses, I understand, are a huge issue. So too are people driving in and out of Harrogate. And that, I don't know what you want to call that, that crossroads could at times be-
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I agree with you. I absolutely agree with you, and I think elderly citizens or senior citizens, that the driving is difficult, they're more cautious, slower, and which is a good thing. And I think having both roadways against each other might not be the best benefit. I'm questioning, can, if you'd be okay with that? I think we need for the safety of the residents, more than for the school buses, ride in, ride out on Harrogate. But at this point, Harrogate does not have the ride-in, ride-out. I've seen, I don't know if it's legally though, I think it is, that residents make a left turn out of Harrogate onto Locust. So I think that's where your most concern would be. Therefore, I suggest that you make it ride-in, ride-out, and the safety of Evergreen, ride-in, ride-out, so there's no cars crossing the roadway, which might help the situation a lot.
Yeah, perhaps. You know, if you picture the entrance and exit of Harrogate on Locust Street, you have an island there.
Correct.
The telephone hall, there's our sign. And so, you know, you have two lanes, if you will, in and out. They can be obscured sometimes. And again, residents who have a diminished vision and reflexes and hearing, we're concerned about that. We don't control how long residents drive. They are independent living. And so it really is up to themselves or their physicians to determine if they're no longer able to drive.
The engineer said before that Evergreen will never be brought out.
Because they object to that.
They can't.
Why not?
Because it's within 200 miles. If they're 200 foot from this other street.
If they make this new road, then they can do this. But if they don't make this, they don't make this at all. And they just develop this part, this will come out.
Oh, eventually. With that, with the project we're looking at, they have the entrance going in there. Evergreen can't be-
By creating this, it's stopping this.
Correct.
Limiting for the rest of the time. Yes, sir, we're agreeing that we believe strongly that if Evergreen is off-set, it will be beneficial for all concern. It would be like, that's our note. We live there, we see that, our residents have expressed that. One of your fellow board members sat on this committee.
Correct.
Could speak to that too, I am sure.
Right, right.
So would you, would you not agree with me that a ride-in, in general, ride-in, ride-out would be a benefit to seniors?
That's not this application.
That will help with Evergreen. Your concern is for traffic crossing.
But it's not this application, you carry the burden.
It's not this application.
Maybe go back and discuss and then figure out options.
Well, we're not, Harrogate, we aren't the application, because we own 29, just for this. There's nothing going on at Harrogate.
The only reason they don't want to develop Evergreen is because of Harrogate. So we're trying to negotiate to see if Harrogate would be okay to make it ride-in, ride-out. Take, either taking away the island, eliminating so it doesn't obstruct, which is, if it's a concern, we should do a stopper right now. Concern for the senior citizens, which is not in my business to say. But you just mentioned that I might be interfering with sites.
Right, now, now-
Attention.
Now, though, you're looking at making changes to Harrogate, so that's not part of this application.
I agree with you. But his concern is because of that entrance, he wants to eliminate Evergreen.
No, but in terms of, you know, everyone, I think, agrees that they need to do improvements at Locust. And the primary one is to get that light at Locust and Vermont.
I agree with you.
And Harrogate is the way to work out with, with Locust to get that, not to get that right, because it needs to be done. It's also considered a part of the street from Route 6.
So I think because you own part of this application and you also own Harrogate, you have the ability to make it safe for everybody. And it's only in your hands, not Harrogate.
Until the light goes out.
A second, let me finish. It is in your hands to make this change. How? By making it in, ride-in, ride-out of Harrogate. Let me finish a second. Ride-in, ride-out of Evergreen. School buses will be able to make a full circle. Fire charts will be able to make a full circle. We continue to develop and roads that need to be developed. So Locust will be alleviated from a lot of traffic from left turns. They'll make tremendous help in the traffic. I think it's in your hands to make this happen. I'll give you suggestions event. Ride-in, ride-out, both sides. School buses are safe. Harrogate citizens are going to be in a much better situation. It's a win-win situation. What's the loss for that? Very minimal, which can be avoided. And putting the kids in that situation by excluding them right, left, going onto Vermont to benefit where you can fix it. I don't think it's striking, in my opinion.
I mean, it's not making changes on Harrogate site, taking, taking a gate. Those are not part of this application.
I agree with you.
And they don't solve the site.
I stated my reason why I requested that.
They stand on their own.
Thank you.
Are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
But in this, you know, I just want to mention, we have been working at this, like I said, for two years. The issues that you've talked about, you know, street vacation, you know, access. We've discussed all of this, you know, and the plan is not very useful.
I understand. You have to understand, some board members have concerns about traffic safety. You know, have all the kids and buses coming out.
Since you started this application, about 600 kids or maybe even more were added to this one. And there's another 600 coming, where this building already started.
But they're not a part of this development.
I'm just giving you a fact that's going on at Locust. So I think, you can still fix it. I think that application needs to happen, and we can approve it. The only question now, the main question is that part of Harrogate, that part of Evergreen, which is in your hands to fix it. You can, you can help, you can help, you can, you can help everybody around. It's not up to the board to say to do that because of that application. But go back to minimalist change, ride-in, ride-out, that will help a lot. The minimalist, whatever it is, yes, okay.
Yeah, here's my thing, just to add one point of clarification. You know, we talked about right now the existing, like, just what did you say? You had a new element to the residence?
Is objection, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think we really need to go further on it, but Mr. Sable certainly has his opinion. Our traffic expert has given his opinion. As Mr. Franklin points out, we're only going to have one road coming out there because the county's not going to approve that other one, even if it's just right turn both ways. So the current situation, one road came out to Locust, one road comes out to Vermont. When we do this, it's going to be the same thing. The buses have to go a little further to come out to Locust. But if they go a little further, they pick up more kids, they go a little slower. It's better than the straight shot.
Brian, let me answer that if you want, one second. These kids were vacated December 21st, 21st of last year. Thank you, I watched the videos and everything. This was vacated because the development wanted to make this kind of development. If we go back to December 20th of last year, we would have just developed Evergreen, made a small cul-de-sac of three, four houses where the kids can come into Evergreen, make the next ferry or sell the same thing. Wouldn't have an issue. So we vacated the property, those two streets for that reason. Eliminated finishing Evergreen, which is going in circles for a reason.
We keep saying, we keep saying the same thing. You keep saying it's better to have, and it sounds like that too. But if there's one road out there, all the same number of buses are going to come out, whether they're coming out at this point or at this point, and it's going to be better for traffic, and that's what our expert says. We have to, board members, make the decision on that.
Thank you, sorry.
Anybody from the public, a moment, anybody from the public would like to be heard on some question? How many people from the public would like to be heard? Hold on, let's go to the field.
I see two and a half. I have a pencil.
One guy is, that's what I'm saying. Okay, so we're going to have to continue. Two members want to leave. We don't have a floor. So, uh-
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
We're down to this question now.
I can say. Does my person say they can't say?
Who's the candidate?
I don't know, who wants to say?
Who's the?
I have only 15 minutes to go.
I promise I'll be honest.
I apologize.
This is not a, we're not used to this place. We're looking at a half hour, I think. I think we're looking at it at the limit, we keep wanting it to half hour.
You have three guys.
And I have a school budget, one of them has a 9:15.
Okay, so when can we continue?
We did so, you pushing someone?
We'll go back, we'll, one at a time.
Our next meeting is September 20th. We have the other first sub-application that night. And then you're not, you're going to have to back that.
What else is on the agenda besides that?
Three extensions and one emergency division with that top auto number app that we talked about recently.
Put it on that one.
Continue in the first?
I don't need to close.
So, so, could we go back, we're fully in the public?
Yeah.
I just wanted, I know it's a pair.
And you can make your-
If you want to make any changes, that'll be good.
Okay, so what date do we have?
20th September.
Okay. That doesn't probably be right.
Um, you want to make an exception, if I can ever remember the date.
I'm supposed to be, I have a statement, 22/88, Locust Hill in Dallas, East Central. And will be renewed to be September 28, 2018, 6:00 PM. We need this G D call before you're going to be required.
Approval of minutes?
Vote.
Second, all in favor?
Out.
Approval of votes?
Vote.
Second, all in favor?
Out.